All right. Good evening. Let me call to order the regular city council meeting for the City of St. Helena for Tuesday, August 14th. Ms. Cobberstein, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilwoman Doring.
Here.
Ellisworth.
Here.
Ms. Cobberstein.
Here.
All right. Next item is public forum. This was an opportunity for members of the public to address us with respect to matters not on the agenda this evening, and public comment is limited to four minutes. Does anybody wish to speak at public forum?
Good evening. I'm Anthony McKelley. I want to talk about public information. To me, when somebody comes to this council and totes that, and I'm going to use Los Acabos as an example, that for us to be able to come in your community, disrupt your community, we'll give you $750,000 to 1.45 million in TOT tax. And the city at that time promoted that also. It wasn't just the developer. I think that me, as a citizen, should be able to go to the city clerk and, a year after they're open, ask for that information. Because they did it in a public forum here, so we would know the next time a hotel comes or any other business that the city gives us all this information. We should have a right to verify that information. And it shouldn't be closed information, because they came here in an open body to give that information. Same applies to projects that the city deems water-neutral. We should be able to go to the city a year later, was that project water-neutral? Because if what you're telling us is the truth, we would probably be more apt to before projects. But we don't know, because we're never given access to that information. And it's not like asking these vacation rentals or anything, because they never come here and never tell us, you know, what they're going to do. I'm just saying about people that come before this body, that make promises here to us that we, the citizens, should have that access right. Thank you.
Thank you. So, a brief response from the city manager?
Just briefly on the TOT, the numbers are proprietary, and for that reason, we're unable to disclose the specific amounts.
Any further public comment? Yes. Mr. Bell?
Tom Bell. You know, I hate to read things to you guys, because it's boring, and I don't always get a chance to make a point, but when you've only got four minutes, you know, and you want to make sure you get the message across, you always have to read it. But I have a question at the end of this. It's going to take about two and a half to three minutes to read it, so I hope you bear with me on it, okay? During our city's 2016 utility rate study, there were several difficult issues discussed in the ad hoc committees and in the city council and so forth and so on. And one was whether a $50,000 a year surcharge should be discontinued to the Meadowwood Country Club and 50 adjacent outside-city water customers. This issue, along with many others, were the impetus behind a petition in St. Helena, where over 900 signatures were collected, asking city council to postpone approving a proposed 216% water rate increase on the heels of a 70% increase in 2011. The city's 2016 utility rate consultant, Catherine Hansford, advised the public and the city staff that the Meadowwood surcharge was appropriate, if expense records were kept, because the costs associated with pumping water to a higher elevation, storing water in tanks, and the cost to repair and maintain the Meadowwood water system were all expenses that could be charged to the Meadowwood customers under Proposition 218. However, contrary to the rate consultant's input, both the city's Public Works Director and Conservation Coordinator recommended the Meadowwood surcharge be discontinued for three reasons. One, the city had not been keeping records of the increased cost to justify the Meadowwood surcharge. Two, the city considers itself having one water system, and all water customers should be treated the same regardless of cost. And three, city staff stated that the administrative cost to determine the amount of the surcharge would be burdensome to city staff. As a result, St. Helena's past city council voted to discontinue the $50,000 a year Meadowwood surcharge and distribute that extra cost and thereby subsidize it among all St. Helena water customers. This was not the first time a surcharge for water service has been discontinued in our city for not having accurate records. In the process of conducting the 2016 utility rates study, both Mayor Galbraith and Vice Mayor White recalled, "Our city made a similar decision in 2011 after the city's attorney warned St. Helena management it was not keeping records to support what was then a surcharge to all outside water customers." To further exacerbate this surcharge issue, St. Helena management has included a $500,000 capital improvement project to upgrade the Meadowwood pumping station and water tanks to the city's five-year capital improvement plan, to be paid for and, again, subsidized by all St. Helena water customers. I bring this up because, on three occasions this year, the Meadowwood tank and pump upgrade has been agendized for city council approval, and three times, the subject has been postponed to a future date. And I was planning on coming to ask the city council to postpone making that decision until we have a complete water rate study, a survey done, to make sure that we're not in violation of Proposition 218. So my question to you is tonight, why has the agenda item been postponed three times? And secondly, why is it not even on the future agenda for discussion in the future? That's my question to you.
Good. We'll respond to that. The matter is under legal review, and I do believe staff plans to come forward with a Meadowwood item in the fairly near future. Is that right, Mr. Prestwich?
Right. It's under review, and we may separate certain portions of that contract. There are other elements of the contract that will be coming forward, I believe, on the 28th of August, if I'm correct.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Good evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, my name's Kelly Anderson, and I live in Angwin. I'm here tonight to talk about a water issue that affects us all, and that is the county's general plan policy for areas outside of the Ag Preserve throughout Napa County. The general plan policy for all our watersheds is, the definition is agriculture, watershed, and open space. All three of those land use types are included in one sweeping policy that surrounds all of the cities in Napa County. I know that the city supported Measure C on the ballot, and I thank you for that. As a resident of Angwin and Deer Park for 30 years, I have seen a real increase in vineyard development and winery development, and it is in your watershed. Of course, my motivations are selfish, because I would like to protect the forests on Howl Mountain, but I think, as the county proceeds into their strategic plan and visioning process this summer, I've participated in some of those kickoff meetings, and clearly, the request with the consultants and the Board of Supervisors and public commenters was, we need the cities to participate in this vision going forward. And I also heard, for the first time, from four of the five supervisors in the open discussion, concerns about what's happening in our watersheds and maybe how we would view those mountains separately, differently than we view the flat areas. Specifically, there are timber harvest conversions, which you're familiar, where, that is, the forest is cut down and converted to vineyard. It's legally done through Cal Fire and approved by the county. Those are really ramping up. I have a map that I got from your website. It's your watershed, but also defined as an area of vulnerability. And this is from 2013. I'd say the acreage of vineyards has at least doubled, and from what I looked at the Howl Mountain Vintners and Growers website, there are like 40 wineries up there. So this is really not reflecting what's happening. So what's happening up there that impacts you? Timber harvest conversions through Cal Fire. Wineries in your drainages. Less than three-acre timber harvest conversions are these one-time passes for taking down three acres with very little environmental review. Vineyards developed on slopes less than 5% that are not predominantly coniferous forests, that would be oaks, bays, manzanitas, madrones, with some conifers, under 5%, zero environmental review. In addition, what I'm seeing in Angwin is if you buy a property that has one acre or 30 acres, the number-one desirable reason to buy that is to take out the trees and plant vineyards. And the small homeowner vineyards that are going in, which are one, two, three acres, have no groundwater analysis, have no regulation as far as pesticide, I mean, there is regulation, but the homeowners don't really know what they're doing, and there's a lot of impacts. I have a video I took today of some forests being cleared and the equipment just being hosed off in the mud right on Liparita, which runs into your Bell Canyon. So you know the impacts, erosion, air quality, climate change, groundwater recharge, surface water diversions. So here's the ask. The county's going to do their visioning, and they're going to think about maybe doing a general plan update. So I'd like you all, or your city manager, to really robustly participate in that process. I would like you to request the bifurcation of agriculture from watershed and open space in the general plan. Those are decidedly different processes. And I really think, because you are in what's called a sensitive domestic water supply, the county allows 60% of the vegetation to be cleared on any parcel, that you should ask for complete prohibition of vineyard development in your watershed. Thank you.
Thank you. It's probably a matter we should, probably a matter we should agendize for future discussion to discuss whether and how we participate in the county decision-making process.
I would support that.
But just a minute, Mr. Ellisworth. My thought would be that maybe a couple of council members might think about volunteering for that task. It would be a big-time-consuming task. But in any event, subject for further discussion. And Mr. Ellisworth would endorse it.
I would endorse it. I apologize for jumping in early.
All right. Any further public comment? Yes.
Hi there. Thank you, city council members of St. Helena. My name is Chris Malin. I live at 2945 Atlas Peak Road. Yesterday, the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board sent out a notification of opportunity to comment on a proposed settlement between the San Francisco Bay Water Board and the City of St. Helena to pay statutory mandatory minimum penalties of $21,000 for discharge limit violations. And this would be at the St. Helena wastewater treatment plant. And that can be seen at the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board's website, and this was an occurrence in 2017. So I know the wastewater treatment plant is under review and update and supposed to be overhauled and be in compliance, but I just want to be mindful that illicit discharges do harm the river and water quality. The state of California recently upgraded our groundwater to a high priority for a sustainable groundwater management plan and a sustainable groundwater agency. Since our groundwater is in jeopardy, it's in overdraft and has been for a long time, and the Department of Water Resources recognizes this. And many other basins in the state were also upgraded to high, so it isn't just Napa, Sonoma, many others. So we have a water crisis going on in California, and it's really important that we really plan for water management in a really serious way with climate change and more population and more demand. Anywhere from 60% to 80% of the vineyards use groundwater, and the whole eastern side of Napa County is where our municipal water supply comes from. So we have Kimball Reservoir for Calistoga, we have Bell for St. Helena, Rector for Yountville, Hennessy, and Milliken for the City of St. Helena, but all of those water supplies are in jeopardy due to blue-green algae forming, which can become toxic in a minute, for no reason. They don't even know why. Suddenly, it can become toxic and unusable, and that has happened in Napa County. In fact, the EPA is ordering all bays to have nutrient endpoints due to enrichment by nutrients that cause the algae blooms to come. It's happening all over the world, not just Napa. So I really encourage all the entities, all the cities, to get really serious about water management. Our other water supply is the North Bay Aqueduct, which comes right up the valley, and all the cities partake in that, but that is interruptible water. That water can be turned off by the state Division of Water Rights at any time, for any reason, and it happened during the drought. Our allocations were cut back significantly, and we have to depend on our local water supplies to sustain us in hard times. And so taking care of that water is, it should be a number-one priority. And that leads to the watershed health. And anything we can do to protect the health of the watersheds, we should do, and it starts with the conservation regs, changing the specific area in that conservation regs to protect all the land within the watershed that goes into the reservoirs. And anything you can do at the city level to protect our water supply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just as a point of information, we discussed the issue with the Regional Water Quality Control Board at our last meeting, but, you know, these are big issues. All right. Any further public comment? All right. Let me close that public comment, and that gets to reports by staff, city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. We'll start with Mr. Prestwich.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple notes on some projects that we're working on. As you know, we had a number of reports, large issues, that started coming forward to the council about June 12th. The first was the SHAPE committee report. And working on finalizing an initial report, I'm anticipating we'll bring that back on September 11th at that meeting, possibly as a two-step process, where report would be shared on the 11th and then further discussed at a later date. Another alternative, I may be looking at a special meeting to look at particular issues related to that. Similarly, we had a recent conversation about downtown, and I anticipate that that work will also conclude, the work plan will be brought forward at the same time, so probably at our September 11th meeting. And in addition to that, we're looking at scheduling a workshop to discuss the rent stabilization ordinance concept. This is something that will probably be scheduled in the next two weeks, and the moment we know the date, we'll share that with the council and the community and the Vineyard Valley residents.
All right. Ms. Mads?
Thank you. I just wanted to update the, pardon me, the council and the public, that we are wrapping up our fiscal year 1718, so we are planning on closing our books very shortly on that. Our auditors have already come out and done one site visit, and we have our second visit scheduled for mid-September, so we're on track for our audited financials by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Mr. Apollos?
I just wanted to remind the council to speak clearly and write into your microphones. I've been having trouble picking up your voices when I'm going back and listening.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, sir, council and members of the public. I just wanted to remind everyone that we just wrapped up the last study session on the general plan, and we expect general plan publication along with the EIR in September, so be on the lookout for that. We will have a comment period open to the public, asking for public input on the environmental analysis and the general plan itself, but just let people know that that did just happen, and we are moving forward. Separately, the city is also undertaking the creation of citywide design guidelines, which will provide some guidelines for the design of all projects in St. Helena, and we are asking for public input, both through a survey that will be available on the city's website. If you go to the Planning Department and then Design Guidelines, there, it's its own page, and there is going to be a survey up shortly. But also at a public workshop scheduled for the 29th of August, that is a Wednesday, please come. There's two sessions, either morning at 10:00 a.m. or evening afternoon, starting at 4:30. You don't have to show up at any set time. They're two-hour blocks. You can come and participate as you're able, but we would love folks to come and participate and give us their input on the future design of St. Helena. And then finally, folks I'm sure have been watching the construction of the Turley Flats Affordable Housing Project at 1105 Pope Street, there was some financial setbacks that that project continues to experience. However, this morning, the Napa County Board of Supervisors voted to grant another $145,000 to that project to cover some of their unforeseen costs. However, in doing so, they did put some caveats on that money, and staff will be bringing back an item for our council to consider at the next available meeting regarding meeting some of those expectations, just so you know. But project construction will be moving forward, and there will be another discussion item.
All right. Ms. Moniz?
Thank you. I wanted to announce that the railroad and ADA curb ramp construction project is almost through. We have two more curb ramps on railroad to complete. One requires a shut-off of our fire hydrant on railroad between Hunt and Adams, so that work should take place tomorrow night between the hours of 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., and then we'll wrap up the curb ramp project. Albany County Court paving kickoff meeting is this week. Hopefully, construction will commence within a couple of weeks after that, and it'll be a six to eight weeks of concrete work and paving to complete all that work this fall. We've had a series of water main leaks on Highway 29. If you saw some water down by Rutherford last Friday, that was emergency repair work by our city public work staff that we caught after we completed the main repairs here in front of the high school the night before. So our staff's very dedicated and got that work completed and wrapped up on Friday. And then we had another one yesterday at Whitehall Lane. Happened to be a two-inch service off our main, but it's just a series that when we have our Corolla, our master intergrade utility plant, they take a look at that five miles of our 12-inch water main between Rutherford and the city and determine where that should be prioritized in our capital improvement program. On a positive note, our annual stormwater cleanup day is scheduled for September 15th. NapaRCD.org has a website of all the sites countywide, but if you're in St. Helena, it's between 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. We're meeting at Jacob Miley Park, and if you're interested, please contact Michael Fontana, our environmental resources technician in Public Works, and he'll get you signed up, or you just show up on that day, and we'll supply you with some tools, and that's it.
Let me just ask one question. Where we've been experiencing the leaks on the pipeline that comes up from Napa, is that in sections that were slip-lined in around 2010, 2011?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I believe what they're finding is these small pinhole leaks along our 12-inch water main.
And so that's in sections of pipe that was not slip-lined?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Did I see the chief? Ms. Cridan?
Good evening. I just wanted to let everybody know that this Thursday at 6:30, Wild St. Helena is going to be at the library, and they are going to do a live-flight demonstration. So that should be really fascinating for the whole family. And then next Thursday at 6:30, we're going to have our Latino Heritage Night with traditional songs and crafts. So I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Which night is that?
They're both on Thursdays.
Thursday. All right. Chief in Bowden was shaking his head. All right. Let me, Ms. Cobberstein?
Yeah. I just want to briefly address the issue of rent stabilization. We are going to be having an informational meeting for people. I think it's very important for everyone in Vineyard Valley to understand the facts of this proposed ordinance and what it would mean to them. To that end, we did create an information sheet that was available on July 24th, when we first talked about rent stabilization, and I believe it may be going up on the city website. There's a lot of misinformation floating around, and so I hope that people will take the opportunity to come to the city meeting. One of the things that was discussed at our last meeting and is in the fact sheet relates to fees that can be passed through to residents. And as clearly stated in our fact sheets, litigation costs are not subject to pass-through, and we discussed, and the sheet provides, that the council has many options, including no pass-through whatsoever, or a pass-through when only a certain percent of the leases are subject to stabilization. We have a lot of options, and, in fact, we discussed that a bit at the meeting on the 24th. So I was a little bit distressed to see the park owner contact the 19 people who are on month-to-month tendencies there, to tell them that they could be subject to carrying 50% of the fees the city imposes on the park. I just found it a little bit shading the truth and maybe not helpful as we're trying to move forward and understand what this ordinance really means. So I was sorry to see that happen. I hope we'll continue to talk about what this ordinance really does and stop the misinformation spreading that's been going on.
Mr. Ellisworth?
Yeah, there are a few items I would like to see, or just bring up to talk about agendizing. A while ago, we talked about a conversation on the wine train, wine train issues sort of general. And then agendizing a discussion of a fire assessment district. I thought that was an interesting idea to look more closely at. And this has come up numerous times, is working on our Spanish-language translation capacities during emergencies. There are people in the Latino community who brought up that they felt that the transmission of information wasn't coming through as well as it could, and the idea that we're all as well-informed as possible in those times to know where we are and what's going on. So that's something I would like to discuss. And then the watershed issues that came up, I've been working on sort of a comparison of our watershed compared to other Bay Area counties, with the idea that the water is what fills our reservoirs, that supports our investment, our financial investment in our properties, our businesses. St. Helena, we learned, has assessed property values in the city limits of $2.5 billion. So that's a lot to protect. As I look at the Napa County sort of water policies, we have a more rural agricultural model than other Bay Area counties, more like the Central Valley of California or rural Arizona. And the fact that we are charging, or our land values, our land and property values are more akin to the Bay Area, the San Francisco Bay Area, what I would like to see is that we develop policies that have the same sort of water protections and the water security as the rest of the Bay Area, if that's where our prices are. So I think moving forward on a subcommittee, looking at that would be great. And I think that's it.
All right. Ms. Doring?
My turn. No, it's it.
All right. My only comments really relate to the Recreation Department. I've received just many kudos for the work of the Recreation Department in terms of its organization of city-sponsored events, especially softball and bocce, and it's really impressive to see how people have reacted to the work of the Recreation Department and how well it's running this summer. It's certainly very pleasing to me, and I assume the rest of the city and the council. So that takes us to consent items. And again, with respect to the consent calendar...
Mr. Mayor, we do have one oath.
Oh, we have a swearing answer up on us. Sorry about that, officer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving us just a couple of minutes. We came up a few months ago with some other employees, and we wanted to make sure that Officer Lupien was also sworn in front of the public and got an opportunity to be introduced. When we planned that, we didn't realize she was going to be here last meeting getting a proclamation, so we kind of outorder. But I appreciate you giving us just a couple of minutes, because it's a big deal for an officer to be sworn in in front of their family and friends and to have the badge pinned on in a public setting. So...
So I appreciate that, and we'll just take a minute. So, and I told you a little bit about Officer Lupien in the past, but I'm going to cover it again. She actually worked in St. Helena for a year and a half before she went to the police academy and came back to St. Helena and applied here because she wanted to work in this town. At the time, I think she had applied at Napa County Sheriff's Department as well, but very quickly withdrew from that process. So she wanted to be here and we wanted to have her here, which is a great fit. She's got a twin sister who really threw me for a loop earlier today because I thought Officer Lupien showed up tonight out of uniform. She started with us in December, this last December, 2017, sailed through the field training program, is working her way through the probation period now. She's already received several letters of commendation from community members. Of course, she got the proclamation last meeting for the issue with the fire at Architep. And she recently, speaking of fires, worked in Lake County as a representative of the City of St. Helena Police Department, helping out up there in the cities of Lucerne and Nice and Clear Lake Oaks. And saw a need up there while she was working, people that either couldn't or wouldn't leave, had pets, and she found a store that was open, caged it, talked, convinced the store owner to sell her dog food, and then she went around to these animals that didn't have any food and fed them out of her own pocket. So that's the kind of person that Officer Lupien is, and we're very proud to have her here. So let's go ahead and do the oath, and then she's going to bring somebody up to pin.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stephanie Lupien.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Officer Lupien, mother. We have a tradition in this work, you have to straighten. [laughter]
That takes us to our consent calendar. Can any member of the council or public can pull an item? Just let me know.
But we have on the consent calendar, 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, 8.6.
I want to pull 8.6, please.
8.6, all right. Any others? Okay, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve on consent, 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, and 8.7.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Korberstein?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us back to 8.6, and the staff person is Ms. Smithies. And perhaps if you have a specific question, Mr. Ellsworth, you might pose it.
I have a statement that I wanted to read to make sure that got included. I wasn't sure if... So there's nobody from the engineering firm here?
Corolla Engineers is here. There's Tim Loper and Tracy Warner.
Great.
Both representatives of the project.
Thank you for being here. I just want to make sure that we get what we need included in the project. And so I've got a statement I want to read, and it's going to relate back to the study, the engineering study for our... It's a master water and sewer study, but I got to get a little background to get us back to that, but it relates to the study. So the first point I want to make is this, and this is no reflection on the current staff, but as is pretty widely accepted, our city has historically been pretty deficient in the collection of data related to water usage and the true cost to provide the service. The Hansford Study from 2016 did not advance the ball forward very much, and this has real-life impacts because what the previous council did in 2016 was impose new rates on our residents with incomplete data. And more to the point, with inadequate leadership and commitment to get that data. Without cost of service data and proper engineering analysis, our residents, the people who live within our borders and pay taxes here, have no way of knowing to what degree they are subsidizing large water users we supply both inside and outside the city limits. And on this point of serving large users outside the city, let's just be honest with each other. It's really unusual for a city water system like ours to send such a significant share of our water supply to industrial users outside its city limits. We may be one of the only cities in California that does this on such a scale. It's even more unusual to just go ahead and charge those industrial users the same rates we charge a family of four around the corner, when common sense tells us that it costs more to serve those large parcels, especially when you consider what's necessary to get water out over long distances or up some of those hills. And I just want to be really clear about Prop 218 and San Juan Capistrano. We've been told that tiered rates are illegal or prohibited here, and that is flat wrong. The Capistrano decision quite simply makes it clear that if you want to entertain tiered water rates, which I absolutely support, then I quote from the court ruling, "Water rates must reflect the cost of service attributable to a given parcel." And this, folks, is the crux of my concern here and the reason for removing this item from the consent calendar. It's been said in the past that there is no way of determining these costs of service here. That's just false, and would be laughable, really, if the stakes weren't so high. Once again, we have $2.5 billion worth of assessed property values in St. Helena. That's billions with a B, all dependent on a properly functioning and properly balanced water system. Any further inequities created by the removal of our tiered rates in 2016 done with inadequate analysis will be even more impactful if we have any kind of a dry year. So I will continue pushing strongly over these next few months, as the seasons change, to get the adequate data as soon as possible. So here's what I'm asking to make sure is included in the engineering studies. And again, I want to be very clear in what I'm asking as a double safe and also so that our community is clear in understanding what we need to know. And staff and consultants, please correct me where I need correction. There's three points. One is, the City of St. Helena needs the complete and comprehensive cost of service data we need to consider tiered rates. Two, we need the proper engineering studies to understand what actual infrastructure and services are being provided to deliver water to industrial users both inside and out of the city in manners which are substantially more costly for those parcels. And three, I hope that the supply and storage tasks in this contract will include an analysis of the water collection areas of the watershed above Bell Canyon Reservoir that are the source areas for our water system. How can we make promises for delivery to our customers if our source areas are not secure and not well-understood? Thank you for allowing me the time to offer these concerns. I'd like to hear staff and consultants and my colleagues' thoughts because after your input, I'd be willing to make a very simple motion that the description and collection of the data I just illustrated be included in the scope of work of the Corolla and the Black and Beach contracts and that the contractors have some element of collaboration on them so we have a comprehensive look at the whole system with no gaps. And I can't imagine this would change the cost, but if it does, I think it's worth it. The horse is halfway out of the barn here with these studies going out. It will just cost more in the long run and put our community in a worse position if we don't get this right. Thank you.
Well, I haven't opened up for public comment yet. Let me turn to staff and see what comments it has initially.
So, 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 sorry. There are two contracts that we've awarded, or we haven't awarded the second one, which is the Corolla, which is the large contract. The analysis, we're doing a water engineering analysis of our system, which I believe will answer and respond to the questions and the three statements that you provided, Councilmember Ellsworth. The Corolla contract is going to be the sewer, water, and storm drain assessment for the entire city, the Integrated Master Utility Plan, that will help us assess and prioritize capital improvement projects like our mains, our main trunk lines for sewer and our main trunk lines for storm and update what we've done to date. We've done many plans over the last 18 years, and we're trying to prioritize those into one big plan, kind of like how earlier meeting about bicycle and pedestrian plans. We want one plan moving forward for our utilities. If there's collaboration between Black and Beach, that's great. These are meant to be two separate contracts. Black and Beach is $25,000, which is under our city manager press, which is purview to sign. And as you were part of that interview process, you'll remember only a few months ago, we're actually going to have a kickoff meeting for Black and Beach next week, and then we'll follow up hopefully in two weeks pending the approval or award of the Corolla contract this evening. And as I said, we have Corolla representatives tonight, Tim Loper and Tracy Warner, if there's any specific questions for them on the utility plan side of it.
All right. Any further initial council comment?
I'll open up the public comment, but first I'd like to hear from the folks that are proposing the contract.
Hello, thank you, council. And I can answer any questions, specific questions.
Pull up the microphone, please.
How's that?
All right.
I think one point of clarification then will be the question regarding consideration of the reservoir capacity and whether that's specifically itemized in the scope of work. I don't know that it is. But in terms of the engineering analysis, it's going to be, as the Public Works Director indicated, that scope of work will be the Black and Beach work, and specifically that work looks at a variety of elements that are used to allocate costs between different tiers and customer classes. And so all of the specific areas that you mentioned will be part of this and what we'll have is a technical memorandum that is produced at the end of that work that will set up a conversation potentially about alternate rate tiers down the road. So this work will be to take a look at our existing infrastructure and identify deficiencies, prioritize the work, and try to optimize the public dollar so that we're investing in the worst of the worst that need, that are clearly in need of attention and not overspending on something that doesn't necessarily need attention when we have something leaking on a regular basis over here. I think if there's an amendment to the contract down the road, it may be appropriate for us to consider some form of an amendment that takes a look at the capacity of the reservoir. I can anticipate that a dredging operation at some point in the future is going to be necessary, and perhaps that's an item that could be added to the scope of work if the consultant has experience in this area.
Sure. And one thing I wanted to address related to your comments was a big part of the scope that is included in the consent calendar is to look at the city's current data systems, technology, O and M, CMMS systems, computerized maintenance management systems, all of those things to make sure that the city is moving forward with a program that addresses the way that data is collected. We spend a lot of time dealing with data as part of these projects. It's a big part of how cities operate, and it's a big part of the scope of what we're going to be doing as part of this project, so.
Okay, great. All right. Go ahead.
And then going back to looking at the reservoir, is this something that your company can look... What interests me is the reservoir, what fills the reservoir, how the reservoir is filled. If we're promising, if we have water agreement contracts, that we're promising water and promising water to our customers in town, what sort of backup do we have on that source where we're getting the water? Is that something that's part of your scope at this point or could be at some point?
It can be. It's not currently part of our scope. We do have, in the water supply analysis, we take a look at resiliency related to your current agreements, future demands, what, you know, how much historically you've been able to pull from the reservoir, those types of things. But in terms of watershed analysis and analysis of the reservoir, we don't include that right now, no.
Okay, but you could conceivably do that in a different scope of work. Okay.
All right. Any other questions with the consultant? You can take a seat.
Thank you.
Ms. Malin?
Yes, Chris Malin, 2945 Atlas Peak Road. Also the manager of Living Rivers Council, and we are in a lawsuit with the County of Napa over the Walt Project, which proposes 309 acres of vineyard conversion right at the headwaters of Milliken Reservoir. Our consultants have been in discussions with the Water Board and the county that the erosion control plans that are used to direct the engineering for the removal of the natural landscape and to reduce erosion. Anytime you take the natural landscape away, the grasses, the shrubs, the trees, you will definitely have increased erosion even with an erosion control plan. The problem has been that the county's consultants who do the erosion control plans were doing some gaming with the variables put into the model to keep showing that erosion would reduce once they do the erosion control plan and show how to put all the infrastructure into the hillside. Anytime you have a vineyard on a hillside, you have a lot of infrastructure, you have drop inlets, you have perforated pipes, you have basins, and all of those can clog up with sediment, and they can fail. And they don't, they're not what they're cracked up to be so that, in fact, you get more erosion coming into, you know, the watersheds, and that's why the river is deeply incising. Some of the banks are 40 feet high because you have increased rate of runoff coming off these hillsides from where the vegetation has been taken away. So much of the Napa River is deeply incised from all of the vineyards and the hillsides, collapsing the banks and driving that sediment into the bay. The other problem is, is that sediment carries pollutants, so it carries fertilizer, pesticides, and that goes right into the reservoir. So we're very concerned about that on Milliken Reservoir, as we should be concerned with all the reservoirs. In fact, the Water Board has issued a lot of fines up and down the valley to the water districts for increases in trihalomethanes, which is a byproduct of bleach. So the water managers are using more bleach to get the algae out of the water, which grows prolifically because of the enrichment from the fertilizers. So trihalomethanes are carcinogenic. So when you do this water study and you're hiring this consultant, to ignore the reservoirs is a big mistake because you need to have availability of water and you need to have clean water. So if you have to spend a lot of money to clean that up, the ratepayer should understand that with X number acres of vineyards, you're going to have a drop in water quality, you may need more filters, you may have more costs in cleaning up the water so that you can drink it. And also, the consultant should determine exactly how much capacity you have in those reservoirs because those vineyards are discharging a lot of sediment and bringing the bottom up. So you may only have, if this is the top of the water level, you may have this much sediment, and you may only be able to use that much of the water column, and that diminishes over time the more vineyards you have. So it's really important to understand your water availability in those reservoirs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the cost associated with it.
All right.
Further public comment?
I'm Bobby Munero, I'm speaking as a citizen.
I have a question. I mean, this, I apologize, I didn't have time to read the staff report. Not really sure what this study is going to be about, but I know that 17%, Tom, you said seven, some percentage of the, of our reservoir, the amount of silt that's grown up, it's, it's gotten, what is it, 70%?
So 11%, Tom?
11%.
I think it was 11.
That sounds more, yeah. So it's already, I'm wondering, is that going to be part of this study? Are they going to be looking, and, and also, is there any way to get a surcharge on the people who own the vineyards that are causing more of the sediment to come into the reservoir to pay for it, which I know is really laughable, but I don't, I don't really totally know if that, if that wouldn't be possible. If not already, to, and looking forward to having that be part of approval of this, of this kind of agriculture. But anyway, I guess I'm really wondering, is that part of this particular project to be checking the change in sediment in the, in our reservoir? Or if, if that could be explained a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
We already, in our five-year CIP plan, there is a dredging of the reservoir, Belkin Reservoir. I believe it's within the next three years. Recent consult information was shared with us by the city of Napa on doing possible bathymetric surveys in the near future from a firm that'll be down in the area. And for economy of sale, scale, we've requested some input from them on providing us prices. This just came up matter of the last couple of weeks. But since we had two public comments, I thought it'd be good to share that. But we always like to public process, get three, three different consultants to provide information. So if Corolla is a firm that might be able to do something like that, we could engage with that. It'd also provide us a baseline before any more vineyard conversions come in into our reservoir. But we don't have a, a scale of cost that that would be yet to do the survey, to see what our sediment is, if it's in line with what we did in our last one, which is 15, 15 to 20 years ago we did one. But it gives you like a model of how much you sediment you should be accumulating per year, so establish a new baseline and moving forward, and it'd be good timing with some of these threats in our watershed.
Good. Yes, Mr. Belt?
Thank you. That percentage came from my research and looking at when the reservoir was constructed. I believe there was close to 2,500 acre feet in that reservoir is estimated, and when the 2006 master water plan was done, it was about 2,200 acre feet. So there's about a 300 acre feet loss in the 19, I believe, 58 to 60 period to night 2006. So it's unknown what's happened between 2006 and 2018. So that's where that percentage came from, just for clarity.
All right, well, it's, it's clearly a complex problem because I know at some point the height, the height, not of the main dam, but the other dam was also raised to increase the capacity of the reservoir. But in any event, the point of it is that the bathymetric studies are in the pipeline at some point to, to be done. All right, any further public comment? Any further council discussion?
I've got, I've got just one final point. I want to just reiterate that, and I'm glad that we're having the meeting with Black and Beach, relooking at the rates, because as I said, these rates that were changed in 2016 have not been drought tested, and if we're heading into any kind of a dry season, as soon as we can get an analysis, the better. And with that, if I can submit these comments, you know, to go along with this item, is that up, something that I can do? Okay, should I do that now, or can I?
You can submit them for the record.
Yes.
I have a different perspective on quite a number of them, but I'm not going to take the time now to go through it. I think the more important point here is to see whether we can have a motion to approve 8.6. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yay.
Aye. Oh, I guess roll call, do you need a roll call?
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth.
Yes.
Coburnstein.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
That takes us to public hearings.
Which I am going to recuse myself. I am on the board of directors for the St. Helena Montessori School.
This is with, in connection with 9.1? Okay, right, okay. Let's see, this is Ms. Smith, I think.
Great, thank you very much. The item in front of you today is a consideration and proposed approval of a resolution, doing two things. The first thing it's doing is approving an associate membership agreement between the city of St. Helena and the California Enterprise Development Authority. I will just refer to that as the authority from here on out. And then the second item is to approve issuance of up to $5 million in tax-exempt bonds for the St. Helena Montessori School. So a little bit of background on this item is the St. Helena Montessori School, otherwise known as the borrower in the staff report. They have requested that the authority issue up to $5 million in tax-exempt bonds to be used to finance various aspects of some of their facility projects on their campus. In order for the bonds to be issued, there are three things that are required. The first is that the city of St. Helena is to become an associate member of the authority. The second is that a public hearing is to be conducted, which we're doing today, to provide members of the community an opportunity to speak in favor or against the use of tax-exempt bonds for financing the projects. And you'll also see this referred to as a TFR hearing, and the TFR hearing is an IRS requirement for tax, for issuance of tax-exempt bonds. And then the last thing that is required is that the city, being a member, is to approve the issuance of the tax, tax-exempt obligations. Just so the council and the public is aware, in 2016, the city also did a TFR public hearing for tax-exempt bonds for the CIA. It was through a different authority for which the city was already a member, so we didn't have to request to be a member. And so that's the difference in why we're requesting associate membership, because it is through a different entity that's authorized to issue tax-exempt bonds. It is also important to note that the bonds issued by the authority for the project will be the sole responsibility of the borrower, and the city has no financial, legal, moral obligation liability or responsibility for the project or for the repayment of the bonds. So essentially, the city has no, we do not have any financial responsibility for the bonds. It's completely between the borrower and the authority. So that is what the TFR hearing is about, and we have Matt Heil here from the St. Helena Montessori School, if anybody has any questions regarding their project.
All right. Any initial questions from council?
I have a couple of questions. What do we get for being an associate member? If we have another project in town or something that we think could benefit from this? I mean, do, do we have a leg up or something? I mean, what's?
We do. That is actually a good point of clarification. Currently, we are a member of the state, the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, which is CSADA, and so we do have the ability to borrow tax, tax-exempt bonds from them. Being an associate member of this new authority, we also have the ability to borrow through them. It does not mean we exclusively can borrow through them. We can still go through the regular channels and really shop out the best rate for us.
Thanks.
Any other initial questions? Let me open the public hearing. Is there any public comment? Mr. Heil, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for the staff report. Just a few brief comments that I wanted to add. It's a little misleading, I think, and there were maybe a few members of the public who were a little misled that we were actually receiving bonds from the city, or funds from the city, or from the school district, or something like this, and that's absolutely not the case, right? So we've actually negotiated a loan with our bank, the Bank of Marin, which is a kind of local bank here in the valley and in Marin County. And it's a program that's available for, for all 501(c)(3) entities and organizations. The St. Helena Montessori School is a tax-exempt public benefit corporation under section 501(c)(3), so are many other organizations, and any, you know, 501(c)(3) in St. Helena can make themselves available to borrow funds through this program. In the past, the, the school's actually done this once before in 2014. We used ABAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments, which has since disbanded. So that is the reason for kind of redoing this, if you will. They, they don't issue, they're not an issuing authority anymore. This authority, which is called CALLED, it's based in Sacramento, it's the preferred authority of the bank, and so that's why, you know, the, the reason to become an associate member. In, in the past, we had our TFR hearing, the same exact similar hearing at the Napa County Board of Supervisors. So it's not a brand-new process. In fact, Stone Bridge has made, used tax-exempt funding as well for their construction facilities. And just, just a, another point or two, you know, I realize it's somewhat a sensitive issue. We received approvals on March 3rd from the Planning Commission, and there have been some school closures in the community, and, you know, we obviously are aware of, you know, our good fortune at this point in time, but I did want to put on the record that, you know, we are here to, to build these facilities that were part of the campus master plan from the original approvals 12 years ago. So this isn't any expansion, we're not building some new school, we're literally just completing the last two buildings on the existing property. I can answer any other further questions at this time.
Thank you very much. All right, any further council discussion?
So the, so the benefit, uh, is, it, it supports your request to have a partner or to have a, not necessarily a partner, but somebody sign on, whether it's the city or what previously was?
Yeah, so, so I think the way the law works, it's, it's a federal law, and it's actually across, I think, all 50 states, is 501(c)(3)'s only for construction of facilities and improvements that are fixed improvements. You can't do it for salaries, you can't do it to, you know, for, I don't know, to pay off a, a bad debt for mismanaging your corporation, but, but for approved facilities, there's a certain, you know, constraints that you have to walk through, and a lot of legal documents, et cetera. But it's available for all 501(c)(3)'s across the U.S. The public hearing, I think, is a guarantor of the fact that this entity does exist, that it exists within a community, or, you know, that people can vouch for it. So it's not some sort of shell 501(c)(3) or some false entity that's taking advantage of the program. I think that's really the sole purpose for.
That links it to a public agency, is to give it that sort of?
Right, so that there is a public hearing.
Gotcha.
That was notified, and that, you know, a representative of the entity showed up, and that, you know, it's not, like I said, some fraudulent transaction. That, that's, I think, the guarantee and the spirit for the public hearing.
Okay, and then, and then it, as, as I, as you said, it, it's financially separate from the city. The city encourages no obligation.
Completely, yeah. In fact, in, in this case, we even offered to foot the, you know, kind of the paperwork bill, if you will, so that there was absolutely, I mean, there's the staff time to put it on the agenda and have this hearing, but other than that, there's no cost to the city, yeah, and no obligation going forward or anything. There's no guarantee, no nothing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further council discussion? Is there a motion to approve item 9.1? Pardon? Sure, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought.
I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't know what the whole 12-year plan is. I'd just be curious to know.
You mentioned two last buildings. Could you explain what the last buildings will be at the Montessori School? Thank you.
It's a, I can't remember the plan number, but it's, it's available on the city website. It's a middle school building and a toddler building.
Okay.
That were part of the original plans.
Okay.
So it's a, it's classroom buildings, essentially. Yep.
Okay. Any further council discussion? Can I have a motion to approve item 9.1, please?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ellsworth.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes.
Councilmember Doring.
Yes.
Coburnstein.
Yes.
All right, next item is 10.1.
Let's bring in Vice Mayor White.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 10.1, council discussion, review of the facts concerning the construction of a fence between properties located at 1815 Hillview Place and 1859 Hillview Place. Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, members of the council and the community. On July 10th of this year, this, at a, the city council meeting, property owners from 1815 Hillview Place spoke during public appearances, voicing concerns over the construction of a fence between their property at 1815 Hillview and an adjacent property at 1859 Hillview Place. In response, the city council directed staff to place an item on the agenda, to allow the council to review and discuss the topic at the next available meeting. And so here we are. And I will mention both property owners are in the audience and I imagine will be available for questions, if there are any that I can't answer. 1815 Hillview Place is a residential parcel. It's developed as a single-family home, and it's located within the medium-density residential land use district and within the urban limit line. In November of 1992, this property was granted a variance to allow their owners of that property to construct an addition within the setback there, and up to, I think, approximately two feet from the southwestern property line, which are, which is the property line with the adjacent property owner at 1815, 1859. And the documents associated with that variance are attached to the report. Part of the justification used to grant the variance was the presence of a 12-foot wide utility easement adjacent to the property but located completely on 1859 Hillview Place. There's also some information on that attached to the report as well. 1859 Hillview Place is a five-acre agricultural parcel, developed with a vineyard and some associated agricultural buildings. It's located outside the urban limit line and is burdened with a 12-foot utility easement running the entire length of their northwest, or, I'm sorry, northeastern property line. And based on the available information, this easement appears to be a private agreement addressing water and potentially sewer lines amongst three neighboring property owners. So there's no public infrastructure located in this easement that we were able to determine. And then at some point over the last year, the owner of this property constructed a six-foot wire fence running along the property line between the two properties, and there's some photographs of the fence attached to the report as well. City staff has met with both property owners numerous times over the last year, reviewed the facts of, of the situation, and determined that the owner of 1859 Hillview Place legally constructed the fence. The fence was built on, on the, on or adjacent to the property line between the two properties, which is also the easement line, so it's not located over the easement. The building code governing fence construction doesn't require a permit for any fence less than seven feet tall, so there was no permit required, none was obtained, and the property is actively farmed and so gets the benefit of some of the right-to-farm provisions. So based on all of these factors, staff determined that the fence was legally constructed, and the city has no enforcement mechanisms or authority to regulate the fence construction. Any concerns or disputes between the property owners regarding the fence, the easement access, and those types of things are a civil matter to be resolved amongst the property owners and beneficiaries of the easement. So with that, I'm available for any questions, if there are any. The property owners of both properties are here, and that's the information available to the staff as of today.
All right, very good. Any initial questions of staff? Does either property owner wish to comment? Dr. Brown, did you wish to speak?
My name's Mary Brown, and I live at 1815 Hillview Place. Before I go into what I have to say, I'd like to point out to NOAA that the fence is not located along the property line, it's located over the easement. We have two city reports. The first is the report to the city council prepared by NOAA regarding the fence being discussed today. NOAA's portion is one and a half pages, the remaining 23 pages are copies of the documents submitted to the city for the remodel in 1992. NOAA's inclusion of these documents affirms the totality of the measures that we took to rightfully acquire and perfect the variance and building permit with every intention to be forthcoming. We presented plans and paid fees, we requested approval from the then owners and the prospective owners under contract, and from our city. Our due diligence was noted, and the permit was granted. Within these documents is a plat map, to which NOAA has referred, which shows a 12-foot sewer and water easement. NOAA's assertion that the easement appears to be a private agreement amongst three neighboring property owners is pure conjecture. At the time this plat map was drawn, there was only one owner who was subdividing his property for future sale. Within the last, last year, several database searches by Napa County, as well as St. Helena city personnel, including Public Works, have revealed a lot of confusion as to the easement's uses. At the time of our variance application, it was the conclusion of the Planning Commission that the easement was to the benefit of the city. NOAA's is the first assertion otherwise. The city of St. Helena Planning Department Agenda of November 17, 1992, the project analysis states that construction is prohibited on this easement, effectively giving a 14-foot clearance from any future building. The setback for a side yard is clearly identified as 10 feet, which proximity to this road and its easement guarantees. As to the variance, its Section 3 states that permit shall be in conformance with all city ordinances, rules, regulations, and policies in effect at the time of issuance. In the 35 years we have lived there, in the 26 years since the permit was granted. In the 35 years we have lived there, in the 26 years since the permit was granted, there have been no complaints or violations against our property or its management. Item 5 under Section 3 states that applicant will defend and hold the city harmless of claim, action or proceedings so long as the city promptly notifies the applicant of any such claim, action or proceedings, and the city cooperates fully in the defense of the action or proceedings. NOAA's report under discussion states that staff met with each property owner in an effort to assist with understanding the policies and individual rights affecting the construction of the fence. This is disingenuous at best. Yes, it is true, the property owners met separately with NOAA and Aaron, but on distinctly different issues. What NOAA fails to clarify is that pertaining to the fence, staff met with Donnie Gallagher before installation and not until after installation of this fence with us, and that was when we went to complain about it. At no time did staff notify us that there was any conversation or intention to install a fence that would sit just inches from our home. It was not until the very afternoon that Donnie Gallagher, his vineyard foreman and heavy equipment showed up, that we learned the fence had been contemplated, discussed and decided by staff. It felt like an organized ambush with no recourse. In fact, Donnie took great pleasure in informing the police officer, we called in desperation, that he had the city's permission and input. The fact that NOAA and/or Aaron intentionally withheld this vital information from us for the sole benefit of trespass is troubling. They had every opportunity to alert us, unlike the guarantee of anonymity promised to those reporting code violations, they had no justification to keep Donnie Gallagher's intentions secret. They apparently failed to perform due diligence, resulting in our inability to use or access the west side of our home and property. How can the city be held harmless under this scenario? We have lived at this home since 1983, for 35 years. There have been no substantial changes in our property since 1992. Our home was built in 1962 and never in that time has there been a fence or a need for a fence. Why put up a fence now? The answer to that question is found in the second report. I'd like to hand off to my wife, who will deal with that.
I am Joy Rhodes Brown, I live at 1815 Hillview in St. Helena. This second report is directed to the planning commission in preparation for an upcoming meeting. It is written by Aaron and approved by NOAA, and what is found in Aaron's report has relevance here. Trespass Vineyard's actions have steadily deteriorated over the years and lately, behaviors have become overtly egregious and hostile. According to Aaron's report, Donnie Gallagher received a use permit and design review approval in 2001 for an 800-square-foot ag barn to serve the existing vineyard. This barn changed trespass focus from primarily ag to everything hospitality. Tours and tastings, which are not allowed in a vineyard, became a regular occurrence. Donnie's tasting events are predictably 90 minutes long. One car leaves and another car or limo or bus arrives. Weekends and holidays became a nightmare on what is supposed to be a residential dead-end street of two houses. If it wasn't a tasting, there was a construction project. More outbuildings later clad with stone, stone pillars and a lockable iron gate, rock wall seating areas outside the ag barn, fire pits and tables, not one built with city oversight or permits, certainly without consideration or input from our neighborhood. Reviews of his tastings on Yelp are glowing. It was discouraging, disappointing and frustrating that the city appeared to have blind eyes and deaf ears to all this. The constant stream of cars and absolute discourtesy was beyond what one family should have to endure. In the 100 vineyard acres abutting our home, only trespass has blatantly and selfishly disrespected the codes and community standards in our neighborhood, in which he does not live, by flaunting nonstop illegal and discourteous behaviors. The Yelp reviews had one consistent complaint, trespass had only a porta potty. We at least had this one consolation to curb their ever more tastings and sales. Then one day, I noticed a new structure. Unlike the others, this one was on the party side, where the patios, fire pits, tables and bocce court are. I said to myself, no, he would not dare. But yes, he would, and yes, he did, build himself a bathroom. A glorious stone-clad building. This was the last straw and the camel's back was broken. I went to City Hall and complained to Aaron. His surprising response to me was that they were waiting for a long time and expecting somebody to report trespass. So when Aaron says in his background that staff became aware of unpermitted structures, he isn't saying quite as much as he could. Trespass found themselves in code enforcement violation proceedings. It is well past ironic that trespass, and by that I mean Donnie, has spent years defying and disobeying city codes, building whatever and wherever he wanted to serve his purposes, including an unpermitted septic system. Yet belief in the rights of others is beyond his understanding. He has stolen years of peace and quiet from our lives with his tours and tastings. By virtue of our post-drought landscape project, when our 25-year-old planter boxes were removed, he found an opportunity to harm us. In retaliation for being called to answer for his code enforcement violations, he schemed to install a worthless fence. After a sham survey, the fence was installed in retribution and spite. No one can explain the function of this fence. It does nothing but irritate and annoy. It is a constant reminder of Donnie's dishonesty and temper and that his hands were finally caught in the community cookie jar. City staff has abetted his aggression by enabling him to take away a lifestyle we haven't enjoyed for 35 years. And adding insult to injury is the fact that Aaron and NOAA asked us to be their eyes and ears on trespass. We provided the information they wanted and then afterward colluded in what they are now calling a legally constructed fence. It is an injustice and is perpetuating an attitude that contradicts any sense of community or propriety. Nobody in their right mind would have agreed to this variance, knowing that in 25 years a bully would be allowed to disrupt our lives in this manner and worse with the help of city staff. In discussion with St. Helena's Fire Marshal on the topic of this fence and the easement, NOAA admitted to him that the fence probably was retribution. Aaron's report states the design review promotes qualities that bring value to the community and foster attractiveness and functional utility of the community as a place to live and work. Can this council please explain how a fence that does nothing but disallow access to our own long-existing property and is as ugly as a prison perimeter brings value and fosters attractiveness and functional utility? The City of St. Helena is doing harm to its call for activism. There is a constant request for community to report code violations, including zoning and short-term rentals. However, if the retribution and penalty to the reporting parties is greater injury than the consequences for the illegal and possibly criminal behaviors, who do you expect to help next time? The "ask forgiveness, not permission" mantra is age-old. Evidently, it works well for some, but should it really? We know with certainty, we're not alone, when we say we are fed up with this acceptance of flagrant bad behavior toward our community standards and ideals. The City of St. Helena cannot ask for help from its citizens and then participate in punitive retribution. Please remove that fence.
Further public comment? Does the owner of the adjacent parcel wish to speak?
Yes. I'm Don Gallagher and my wife and I, we own 1859 Hillview Place. And I have a question for you all. When someone threatens to steal, take 10-foot of your property, what would you do? We've had, I thought, a neighborly 20-year coexistence, and one day, as I drive up and see that the Browns were in the middle of a landscaping project, I noticed that they were well over the property line. And when I went to the Browns, Dr. Brown followed me outside and informed me then that he was claiming adverse possession.
Okay.
To protect our property rights and our property line, we did construct a fence. Yes, we did consult with the city planners, we wanted to make sure that everything was on the up and up because of all the other things that we had done, I'm not running from that, we are dealing with that, those issues too. So for there to be no reason is beyond me. I don't know of any other thing, other than the variances they talk about. Dr. Brown got in front of everyone at the last public forum and said that he had a variance and it was done correctly. We did have an official survey and that survey showed that their property is four inches from the property line. And that variance was agreed upon if their house stayed within the same footprint, which was two feet at that time, in 1992. The eaves of their home go over the property line. They have a rock wall three foot into our property. They have a rock planter completely in our property. They have a patio two foot over the property line. He's been encroaching on our property for years and we put a stop to it.
All right.
Any questions?
No, not for me. Any council member? Thank you very much. Is there any further public comment? All right, let me close.
I guess I have one question for both parties. Do any of you have a copy of the easement agreement?
I'm sorry, you're talking about-
Any of the four of you, I would like to see a copy of the easement agreement, may shed some light on who is to benefit-
Easement agreement.
Right.
Easement agreement that's referred to throughout the variance application.
I don't have a copy of that. We have a copy of our title report that I could make available to everybody. It's the easement that, the only thing we can think of that they're referring to was from 1870-something, and there was, the only thing I have is in the title agreement that would relate to that. So it's nothing that seemed to be current, nothing that we were aware of, obviously, when we bought the property, and it's obviously not an ongoing structure. I also wanted to just double-check to make sure, I had sent some paperwork in that shows the actual survey that we had done on the property, that shows the property line and shows the issues going over the property line, and I did submit that last week, I just wanted to make sure if you got it by email, otherwise I brought copies with me. Okay, should I give you the copies anyway to distribute? Do I just give them to you?
Let me start with you, Mr. Doring, and ask if you think it's useful for you to review the easement. Do you want to continue with the discussion this evening or review the easement and then-
No, I think we can continue with the discussion, I just think it would be helpful to see what the rights of the parties are with respect to this easement. I'm saddened to even have to hear the kind of frustration and discord that these two neighbors have expressed. It's not a St. Helena core value, for sure. Probably what I'm going to tell you is that, you know, without looking at that document, that easement agreement, my assumption is that there's not a whole lot that the city can do because it appears to be a dispute between private litigants, although I can see how the Browns would have formed an opinion that maybe there would not have been any building in that 12-foot easement, given the sort of, I'd say, kind of bizarre language of the approval of the variance, there are a number of references to the 12-foot utility easement as a justification for getting closer to the property line because there wouldn't be any building in that 12-foot easement. And, you know, I could see someone going, hmm, if you're a layperson and you don't grapple with easements like I do almost every day, you wouldn't really expect anything to be built there. And, you know, and then on the other side of it, you know, there's some law that says you don't really have to build a fence in order to protect your rights, you can post notices, there are different ways of getting around that. I think the thing I'm suggesting is, this would be a perfect case for Judge Snowden to work out, I mean, really. I mean, we need to ratchet down the energy and realize what both of the interests of the parties are and try to, and there's a long history here and a lot has been detailed. We asked that this be brought back solely for the fence and all these other issues are clearly important and our staff has, our city has the obligation to enforce its regulations, but the sole issue here is this fence, and how do we work this out? I mean, this, there's got to be a way where you could protect your vineyard and your property, but also give the Browns a little working room. The pictures don't do justice. I understand what your point is, but I also saw a little bit of an opening that, yes, I'm here to protect my property line or protect against, we would call it a prescriptive easement, I see that. There's got to be a way for you both to kind of reach a compromise here. That's what I'm offering. I'm offering to help in the way I can, to bring the parties together if you're both willing spirits. I don't think the system is set up for your dispute, but it's not a St. Helena value, we need to get past this, but also accommodate both of your concerns, so that's what I would offer.
All right.
I agree, I think that's a great offer. I also agree that somewhere on a plat or something, there must be some language about this easement, and I think we would be remiss if we did something without some more digging into whether it's there, who it benefits, what their rights of access are. You know, it's true, you can take a fence down, but it may not even be allowed in the first place under the terms of the easement, and we don't seem to know that. I do agree with Paul, I've seen a lot of situations like this too, and people are, you know, preparing for a legal battle, and I'm always more of a negotiation person, who looks for a compromise. Now that you've staked out your ground, kind of literally, I would hope that there could be some agreement between the owners that could resolve the situation, maybe be, obviously, recorded against the property, and you could go on and live a peaceful life, both of you. So I would, you know, I would like to continue the matter to see what more we can find out about the easement at a minimum.
Mr. Ellsworth?
I think that sounds like a good course, I think, looking at the easement, continuing the matter, and then having the parties, you know, think about what Mr. Doring said about trying to come to some place of compromise or some place of discussion. But by continuing this, we can look at the easement and maybe we can get a little more depth to what we're seeing. So that would, I concur with Mayor, Ms. Coburnstein and Mr. Doring.
Mr. White?
Well, I'm glad that Paul came up with a solution, because I really didn't see it as in our purview as a council to be working, trying to adjudicate a civil dispute between neighbors. I really don't see where we have jurisdiction over this, if our staff report is correct, which I don't doubt, but if there's other circumstances or if there's some way of getting the neighbors together, I think that's admirable, so.
For myself, I really have nothing to add. I appreciate Councilmember Doring's offer. I began by saying, hey, maybe it was wise to take a look at the easement, and he's agreed to do so, and he apparently has the expert eye to do so, so that's, I appreciate that. So I would suggest we continue the matter, give Mr. Doring an opportunity to look at the easement and perhaps work with both neighbors and see whether some resolution can be reached. Is that-
Oh, I'm not sure it adds much, other than to remind the council that typically cities have no authority to enforce private easements between parties. There are some easements that contain language that would make that rule inapplicable, but generally easements are matter for private enforcement.
Right, all I'm saying is that it seems prudent to take a look at the easement and just, and-
I mean, we may be the beneficiaries of the easement- I mean, maybe, we may be the beneficiaries of the easement. The city is, and so obviously if we are, then we have something to say about it that could be helpful to these neighbors. I mean, that's the only reason I would want to look at it.
That's exactly right.
And I don't have access to it and hopefully you guys can get it. I'm not going to run down to the court and do your work for you. I mean, you got to get the easement and then we'll, as I said, I, you know, if I can help in some way, as a city council member, not as a lawyer. I hope you know that. It's as a city council member. Thank you.
All right. So I think we'll continue the matter and see where we end up after Mr. Doring looks at the easement and talks with the parties. Okay, that...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I've managed to lose my... 10.2. And I've got the wrong... Hold on just a minute. There we go. Is it the City of St. Helena Fire Marshal Succession Plan?
Can't retire.
Mr. Capone?
This is an information item only.
Information item only. You can't retire. Mayor and city council and staff, I think you have a copy of a staff report. Councilman Doring asked about succession planning for my position. And so I prepared a short staff report, kind of outlining my plans. I told the chief and I told Noah that I would give him a year's notice, which I did. With a smile. Other than the mayor, I'm probably the oldest city employee, so.
You're not allowed to comment on the age of the mayor.
Anyway...
It's good that you're older than I am.
Oldest or longest?
Both.
Both.
Both. So anyway, I think we put together a good plan for my succession to continue to serve the city for inspections and for eventually the fire marshal position. One of our current employees of the city and the fire department, Alec, is, has been taking inspection, fire inspection classes. He's passed inspection, fire inspection one, and is currently working on a task book to become proficient in that. And he's also completing classes, should be by the end of this month, for fire inspection two. He also plans to participate and take the classes for the fire marshal when they're offered. The curriculum has not been completed yet. So when I'm in the office, I've been mentoring Alec and taking him out on inspections with me and, you know, kind of helping him through the process. I think that by the time I'm ready to, July 1st of next year, to not come into the office on a regular basis, that Alec will be able to do most of the stuff. What I told John is, on a as-needed basis, I'd be willing to help out if that was requested. But I don't want to come to the office two days a week. It's time for me to enjoy being retired, I think. So anyway, if anybody has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer any questions you have. I know that Councilman Doring was concerned that, number one, we had some sort of a plan to continue doing what we do here. And the other thing is, are we up to speed on doing our inspections? So as I mentioned in the staff report, the process, the workload, has changed significantly over the last nine years that I've been doing this. Originally, it was basically just running out and doing inspections every day. That was nice when, you know, there was basically no building going on in town. Since then, pretty much all I do is review plans, sit in on plan review, and go out and do inspections for new construction, sprinkler installations, alarm installations, that kind of thing. So the job has changed a lot. Fortunately, we have InterWest that does all of our design, sprinkler design approvals. So that part of the job is taken care of, although there is a lot of interaction with them because occasionally we have to manipulate the code a little bit to make certain sprinkler systems work. And that takes kind of collaboration between me and the people at InterWest to come up with an innovative solution. Excuse me. So, you know, that's something that I can continue to assist, hopefully by phone, but if I need to, I can come in after July. So until July of 19, I plan to be here my normal couple of days a week. See what else is there. I think that's about it. I mean, it's just time.
All right. Well, what can I say? We absolutely thank you for your service and thank you for providing a year's notice to adjust and you're here providing us with a thoughtful plan to find a successor. And I'm hopefully, hoping as you go out in the following year that as needed is as needed in a way that fits your retirement.
Yeah, me too. One other thing that I did mention is that I've got a good rapport with the other fire marshals in the county and they've been helpful. You know, whenever we have a challenging code question, I can call any of them and we can sit down and brainstorm it a little bit. And I think they would continue to be willing to help my successor with any of that. The only other thing that's coming up that I plan to have accomplished, basically by the day that I decide July 1st, the code, the California Fire Code gets amended every three years. That amendment is coming up January of 19. So I'll sit down with the other fire marshals in the county and we'll go over the amendments, look at how it might affect our code. You know, we, the City of St. Helena, actually amends the fire code for our local community. Sometimes we want things a little different than the broad California code. We also try to sit down, I try to sit down, with all the other communities, fire marshals in the county to try and make our codes as cohesive as possible so that we're not on an island somewhere or we're not doing something really weird that nobody else is doing. So we sit down and try and do that. We're required, as a city, for the amendments that we currently have, if we want to continue them, and for any new amendments we might want to make, to file those with the state every year by December of 19. So I'll have all of that put together. You, as the city council, need to pass an ordinance re-authorizing the current amendments we have and any other amendments we might want to make. And so that'll all be in a package for you, so that'll be done. All you have to do is file the amendment, I mean, file the ordinance.
All right, excellent.
Okay. And Alec will be up to speed. Alec, why don't you come up? Alec will be up to speed on all of that. I mean, I'll work with him over the course of next year, so he'll be good with that. This is Alec Biddler. I don't know how many of you know him. He's been with the city for a number of years before he came over to the fire department. So, and he's been a good asset for us at the fire department. And I think with his background of kind of doing a little bit of everything, we go out and do an inspection. The other day, he said, oh yeah, I used to do tile work and, you know, I used to do construction. I used to install Ansel systems in restaurants. So Alec's got a lot of construction knowledge, you know, some fire systems knowledge. And then working with the, with the Fire Inspector One and Fire Inspector Two, I think he'll have a good basis. And then I plan to take him out on all of the inspections that we do from now till next July. Anybody have any questions?
No. No, thanks very much. We really appreciate the service of both of you.
So I just wanted to make a, first of all, thank you for 40 years. It's incredible service to this community and the continuity has given us this security. So thank you. And then to offer a year to train, that gives us also this security. And Alec for stepping up and being willing to do this, I mean, it's really remarkable. And so anything that comes up as this transition happens, if you need support or help or whatever you think of, please let us know because this is, I think we have a great opportunity to do this seamlessly.
Yeah, I think we do too. I think we'll have plenty of time to make everything work smoothly. The only thing that, you know, will be a little bit short on is the, you know, historical knowledge that I've been around for so long that, you know, that's going to be a little more difficult, but the chief's been here for a long time, so, you know, he can kind of fill in in that regard as well.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to Arctown, St. Helena. And Mr. House?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the community. The item before the council this evening is kind of a two-part item. The first is action on a request from Arctown, St. Helena to provide an additional $80,667,000 in funding to facilitate three very low-income families being able to own and occupy units in the Brickle Court Self-Help Affordable Housing Project. And I'll get into the details a little bit more. And then separately, review an action on a request to provide a temporary bridge loan of $80,000 to Arctown, St. Helena to relieve a cash flow shortage being experienced by the project, with repayment of these funds being expected in early 2019. Staff report has a significant amount of background on the project. I'm not going to go into those details. However, one point that's important to make or identify is that on June 14th of 2016, the council authorized use of up to $100,000 in affordable housing trust fund monies to secure designation of up to two of the units in the Brickle Court project as very low-income. You will recall that the project, when it was approved, was restricted to low-income residents. However, Arctown identified that that funding could allow very low-income folks to purchase homes and be residents in that project. Recently, as a part of this request, Arctown identified a slight shortage in their funding for those folks, those two families, to be able to meet the income qualifications. There's a number of qualifications, but there's a combination of down payment income in order for them to qualify for the loans, to buy the homes. And there's a shortage for those two families of $15,000. Separately, there's an additional third family that could qualify, a very low-income family that could qualify to be able to purchase a home if they were to receive assistance of an additional $65,667. And so the combination of those two is the first request, which is $80,667. Separately from that, they've requested a bridge loan of $80,000 to cover a temporary funding shortfall. The project is partially funded on federal, or partially funded with federal monies, but that funds can't be obtained until a few other milestones are met, and so they need a bridge loan with payment expected, repayment expected in 2019. So both of those items are before the council. While it's technically three separate items, staff has grouped into two. One being the $80,667 to allow three very low-income folks to move into the project and the other to be the temporary bridge loan. If approved, it would designate the city manager as having authority to execute those documents and get them accomplished. It's worth noting that the total commitment from the trust fund to this project would be about $1.2 million, so that total is in the staff report, kind of supporting some of the statements we hear regarding the cost of affordable housing in the Upper Napa Valley area. It's also, some additional background is provided to the council of our 2017 RENA calculations, just as an attachment. There is some flexibility in how RENA is calculated, so just be aware that those numbers could change over the years as we keep reporting, but just, it's good information for the council to have. And then finally, the current balance of the trust fund is identified in the staff report, which is about $300,000, subject to all existing commitments. If this money is granted, it would be approximately $215,000 would be the remaining funds, not counting the temporary bridge loan. So just so you're aware of those funds. Staff is recommending approval of all three items and we are available for any questions. Mr. Sales is in the audience, if you have any questions for him that I can't answer.
Okay. Any initial comments? All right. Mr. Sales, do you wish to say anything?
And sorry, I didn't see Ms. Stevenson in the back.
Notice how we moved this up on the agenda?
I was going to say...
Okay, I just wanted to get a little...
...to do this at 10 o'clock tonight, so. We're making progress. I know. Mary Stevenson, representing Arctown, St. Helena, and we appreciate you hearing this tonight. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on it. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I find it rather amazing and actually I am very relieved that we're able to continue on this project, given all the increased costs because of the fires and the impact of the timing and all the other things that had happened on this. We are back doing this. We have the eight people still qualified for the mortgages. We do need a little bit more money for the two very low-income that you've already given and we can put another very low-income person in, a family in, if you give a little bit more. I wanted to draw out two things. One is that the city waivers, the fees that were taken out of the Affordable Housing Fund to pay all the waivers, to do the waivers of all the city fees, that was a total of That means that our fees were 8% of the total cost of the units themselves, or $46,000 per unit. So I think as we move forward on other housing or affordable housing things and we look at how we can make things easier and better, we shouldn't have to take $360,000 out of the Affordable Housing Fund to pay fees to the city for those houses, for 100% Affordable Housing Project. I'm not sure how to do that. I don't know if the fees go down or if there's contingencies within the various departments for affordable housing, but we're not going to be building that much affordable housing and we shouldn't have to pay 8% of the cost of the housing to cover city fees. So, and the other thing I wanted to say is that the, if you approve the very low-income housing, that would be an average of $60,000 per unit for very low-income. And these are families of four to five people who are making less than $50,000 a year, who will be homeowners in St. Helena. So that, this is a deal you will not get again. If you build another Hunts Grove or Stones Bridge, you will not get this kind of deal to put very low-income people in. And lastly, I just want to say, if you take the total cost of the project, the city land is 16%, that's the land as you gave. The fee waivers are 8%. The VLI supplement is 4%. The county's putting in 6%. And the owner builders themselves are paying 65% of the total cost of the project. So thank you very much and thanks for your continued support. Oh, and I signed the final map today. Big deal. So it's coming before you in September.
Very good.
Can I ask a question? Is there anything else that we can do to sort of accelerate? I mean, when is... I mean, when is the timeline on this getting built so that people can actually move in? And is there anything we can do to be helpful to?
Boy, that would have, that, if you could have done that last year or the year before, that would have been great. The negotiations to buy the land from the city took a year. We were six months delayed because of construction schedule last week, last year. The site development will be done with, hopefully, within the end of August, and we have to have a 90-day quiet period for mechanic's liens, and so the builder owners will start their work in November. And I hear it's very typical for self-help housing to start in the middle of winter. That always seems to be whiz. And it will take them 16 months minimum to build these houses. So the delays, the bad delays hopefully are behind us, but we're looking at 2020 for these houses to be done.
If there's some way to find some funding to help with labor or something like that, is that something that can be looked at that might accelerate a process?
No, because these are self-help houses, and it's USDA and it's very regulated.
Oh, okay.
But if you want to accelerate the process, we've got another quarter million dollars in technical assistance funds, and we can build 11 more self-help houses for low-income people, but we need to find the land.
And that's the toll we expect is not having the land?
We've got a pledge of a million dollars towards the land, and the perfect place to do it would be on railroad. There's also other pieces of land in town, but we haven't been able to make any progress on them. So if you want to build, get going, we should be doing the second phase.
Okay.
And that's where we need help, is getting at least a half an acre, preferably more like three-fourths of an acre of land that's zone medium density that we can either get donated or purchased. And we, the next 11, we can do very, we can do quicker than we did this one.
Okay, so if we push now, maybe by spring or summer of next year, we could get something rolling? I mean, if?
If we can identify land this year, we can probably be to you for entitlements within six months.
Okay.
All right. Any further public comment?
Mary, could you just explain to people what the term silent second means and what's happening with it?
Yes. The silent second is the, some of the homeowners will have silent seconds on their houses, and that's because they are not able to qualify for the $350,000 mortgage that we'll get from the USDA. That's, that's the mortgage amount for each house. So people who can't qualify for that are being supplemented by the very low-income supplement that the city's giving them, and some of them will also have a supplement from the county's money. The county gave us $280,000 in loans to do the pre-development work, and that will roll over into silent seconds. And what that means is the houses are de-restricted for 55 years, and if anyone chooses to sell their home within that 55-year period, the silent seconds to the city for the three very low-income, if you approve it, and for the county's money will be paid back to the city and the county. And you can choose to put that back in if you want to. So it rides as a second, on a second mortgage, or a third mortgage in some cases, on the house itself, behind the USDA mortgage.
And is there any requirement for payment while it's sitting there, or is it truly silent?
No. It's truly silent, and the counties will, you know, if they stay in the house, the counties will eventually go off. But we spent a lot of brain power figuring out how to do the very low-income silent seconds, so that if a very low-income family moves out, we can provide what's necessary for another very low-income family to move in with this, the second that's on the house, but it might require more money because of the increase in cost. Increase in value, I mean, of the house.
Okay. All right, thanks very much. Any further council discussion?
I think I just want to, I have a question for Noah, and I just want to highlight something that Mary just said, which is our practice of taking money from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to pay some of our own fees, which I think is kind of crazy myself. We're robbing our little bank for affordable housing to do what? Make our bottom line on our general fund look better? I'm not sure. And it seems that if we're really committed to doing this, these fees should be waived, and I assume we're going to develop some policy about this as we get into the housing element. Because in this case, I mean, we've talked a lot about prevailing wage and giving people things, but this is a self-help project, and I, I don't think we're, there's any jeopardy to anybody if we had just forgiven the money. And my question for Noah is your chart about the RENA. We're not doing too well on some of these categories, and I'm not sure what the answer to this is, but the two units that were just designated on Grayson, do they qualify? The time period, I think was 20-year restriction is what was agreed to there?
Yeah, so because they were done in 2018, I haven't undertaken to look at the, and because the project's not built yet, so we haven't actually got the recorded agreements, but I have not undertaken to compare the mandates that were made as a part of that deed restriction to what the RENA requirements are, so I can't promise that they will qualify under this, under RENA. I know they will qualify under other elements of the state mandated housing reporting, which is only ratcheting up. And so we will get credits under some elements of this mandated housing requirements from the state. I'm not sure about RENA.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have that information eventually, because we may come across, you know, the same situation again, and it would be good to get as much as we could out of the negotiation to make it worthwhile. And thanks.
All right. Any further council discussion?
I've got, I've got one question. Is there, is there anything on the horizon that's going to start refilling that Affordable Housing Fund that we're looking at?
So you may have noticed as we bring these items to you that the balance does tend to kind of jump up, and every development project essentially, well, I shouldn't say that, any residential addition over 850 square feet pays housing impact fee of 2.5% of the project value, and I'm sorry, that may only be for commercial, there's two different requirements, but, so residential additions over 850 trigger the requirement for affordable housing, and then any commercial project that's constructed pays into, it's essentially a mitigation or an impact fee for affordable housing. So that's why every time we issue a building permit, or a lot of them, some of these fees that Ms. Stevenson was referencing actually go into a number of accounts, one of which is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund account.
Okay.
So that's why that balance does creep up. Obviously, larger projects that more square footage, or in La Coba, as an example, there was a negotiation that they pay a certain amount into it. And so projects do pay for those impacts, but it's incremental and it's as development occurs.
Okay, thank you. And is that, and that's the only source that refills it?
Currently, we do not have any other designated funding source.
Okay.
And I think it's appropriate to note that on September 11th, we're anticipating bringing you a fee discussion, and this reference to the 800 square feet, for example, is an area where we may want to reconsider that threshold, so the threshold may be zero, right? If you're doing any improvement beyond zero, there's a contribution that's made to the housing account.
You know, along those lines, I think we need to look at the formula we're using and look at the cost per square foot. These numbers were developed in 2004. It's 14 years later. We're still charging people at that rate per square foot, and on top of that, we're not charging them 100% of what we could. We're charging two. So if we're serious about housing, I think we have to take a hard look at the impact fee issue and bring it into the present day.
All right. Let me see if I can get us back to the precise matter before us. Is there a motion to approve the staff recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilman Cooperstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Gobryth?
Yes, thanks very much. The next item deals with CalPERS, and is that you, Ms. Metz? Is it Ms. Kellogg?
That will be me to start with, and then I'm going to pass it over. So as you have heard through the budget process, through the long-range financial forecast, we keep hearing the idea of what is, CalPERS unfunded liabilities. What are they? They're going to be increasing. We know they're going to be increasing. So what we did is, back in February, we retained the services of Bartel Associates to actually take our numbers and our unfunded liabilities through CalPERS, compare it to what CalPERS projections are, as well as do their forecast on what they think the reality might actually be for the return on investment from CalPERS. So tonight, I do have Doug Pryor here from Bartel Associates, who is going to do a presentation for us on the CalPERS actuarial issues that they had from their findings and their report for us.
Thank you. Good evening. You have kind of a lot of material in your board packet. I've tried to shorten this down to kind of a Cliff Notes version of get on, get onto the key points in the, in the material you have. So this, you know, a lot of what's, what's driving rates these days are the investment returns. We have a slide here on historical returns. There's, you know, a couple of key points to make here. One is obviously the volatility, certainly the downturn in '01-'02, the negative back-to-back returns there, and then the financial crisis '08-'09. The system has really had a difficult time, hasn't really fully recovered. If you look at this, over the long term, it's hard to see in this chart, I think, maybe in the board packet, there's a little more detail on this, but, I'm sorry, in the council packet. But over the last 30 years, this has averaged about 8%. Over a year, 20 years, 6.6. So long-term, they've done fairly well. The problem is, last 10 years, the return has been somewhere around 4%. And that's, that's really kind of where the rubber hits the road. We, when we prepared this study, we estimated 2018 earnings or return, and we estimated 9.6. Since then, CalPERS has announced it was 8.6, is a little bit below what we'd estimated, but we built all those, all the, we built that return in when we start looking at future Brief background on the plans that the city has, there's, you know, miscellaneous police are really driving the numbers here. There's the small group in the fire, mostly part-time, but each, each of the miscellaneous and police have multiple tiers. CalPERS actually issues separate reports for the tiers, and when you look at what we have in our projections, we, we have combined everything going forward. So you're going to see some results for just the miscellaneous group, just the police. Briefly, we'll cover the fire, and then you kind of see some numbers in total.
On the fire, it says one-half, but that should be one-half percent, right? Just like the others?
You're right. Yes, it should be one-half percent. One more issue with respect to the investment return. You know, CalPERS had kind of looked at where they're investing, looked at the volatility, looked at the funded status of the system, and decided that they're really taking too much risk with the portfolio for, for the maturity of the, of the plan. The difficulty was to go and change the investment mix immediately and drop the discount rate with a skyrocketed rate. So they came up with this plan to wait for years where they're really good returns, and in those years, they're going to move to a little bit more of a conservative portfolio. It's not a fixed schedule. It's going to be based on how returns kind of perform in the future. So this graph is a little busy. If you focus on the thick green line there, that's where we expect the discount rate to be in the future. So you have, it's, the first data point is 7.375%. Just last week, they released a report, the second data point using a 7.25% discount rate. Next report will be at 7. After that, it's going to depend on where the returns are going forward. The thick green line is where we expect the discount rate to be. Again, it's not a fixed schedule, so there's, there's kind of ranges of possibilities here, and that's all the, the lines sheeting up and down are meant to represent is, you know, it's not a fixed schedule, there's a likelihood that you'll be either at the upper or lower ends of the, of the ranges that are shown there. So we'll cover briefly the miscellaneous program. Again, this is, you get kind of three separate reports, but this is just the, this is the combined miscellaneous program. As of the June 30, 2016 valuation, you see there, there are 54 active employees with the city. If you look down that last row, there are already 79 former city employees that are collecting a pension at this point. And another 26 plus the 33, another 59, they're kind of in the queue waiting to retire and start collecting pensions down the road, that the city will, will, will pay, pay benefits for those individuals too. This is our projection of where we think contributions will, will be going forward for the miscellaneous program. These are in thousands of dollars. There's really two components to the contribution. The normal cost, which is the, I suppose, the bottom line there might be, might be orange, that's the normal cost rate, and then you have a payment on the unfunded liability. And we'll get to kind of the magnitude of the unfunded liability a few slides later. And then the green line at the top is the total contribution rate, so, the total contribution. So for 1718, we expect contributions will be $757,000. It's going to kind of ramp up over time. The end of the period there, we're projecting to be about at 1.4 million in total contributions. This, this trend is, you know, the, I guess the good and bad news is that you're not, you know, you're really not, good news is you're really not, you really like most other agencies in the state, and that's the bad news too, right? This is very typical for agencies within CalPERS. What is maybe a little different here, you are within a risk pool, you have what's called a side fund, which is when the agencies were moved into this risk pool, you were set up with your own kind of balance to even things out with other agencies. That payment is going to, that will be paid off by the 21-22 year, or the last payment in 2021. So you see, that's why the dip is coming in there for that year. This also includes employees are paying, I think, 1% other than dispatch employees, which are less than 10%, I think, of the total. So you do collect towards the employee, employer rate, 1% of payroll from employees. That's factored into that top, top line there for the contribution projections. We're going to look at similar projections for the other groups, and then in total, I'll just briefly mention, you know, we've built in, what I'd say is kind of the best, you know, everything we know at this point may agree or disagree with, with our assumptions, but we're factored in the fact, you know, the, the fact that you're going to hire pepper employees at a lower benefit rate in the future. We've included the impact of that risk mitigation, that drop of the discount rate over time. We've also included what we think will be a lower investment return over the next 10 years of about 6.5% rather than the CalPERS assumed rate. So all of that's built into this model in projecting the rates forward and in the, the other plan that we'll look at here in a minute. Police plan here, demographics quickly, 11 police officers as of the valuation date. Here you have 20 former police officers that are now collecting a pension, that last row, and another 13 that have separated from the city and will eventually be repaid a benefit. The contribution projections for police are here. There's no employee or police officer contribution towards the city rate here, so there's just the three lines. Top line is where we project total contributions to be, 1718, $582,000, projected to grow to $892,000. This plan is slightly different than the miscellaneous program in that there was also a side fund set up for the police, but the payment period on that was shorter, and so it kind of wears away. In this year, you're seeing a drop in your contributions down to $427,000. And I didn't mention on the miscellaneous plan, but, you know, if you look at this, you know, fact is, your normal cost is ramping up a little bit, but it's fairly stable. What's really driving things here is that payment on the red line there, the payment on the actuar, on the unfunded liability that's ramping up. And if you look at many reports, including the cities, what, what you'll see is, you know, the payments CalPERS has required over the years have just not been sufficient to pay down the unfunded liability, right? This is similar to, you know, you have a mortgage payment, you're not paying interest, right? You get further and further behind. Unfortunately- Unfortunately, the schedule CalPERS has had all agencies on has not been sufficient to pay the unfunded liability down. And so that's why they're having to ramp it up over time. So you will, you will pay down the unfunded liability, or expected to, but there's going to be some kind of significant pain in getting there. The fire program, three part-time firefighters. I think this is June 30, '16 data. I think maybe there's a little bit of a data cleanup on the pay with CalPERS with respect to the payroll here. But here, you just have the three with no inactives, no retirees do benefits. These numbers are, compared to everything else, really small. I put the chart in, maybe we'll just jump forward. So this table here kind of summarizes where the city lies with respect to other agencies in the state. And, you know, the last row there shows contribution, projected contribution rates in '24-'25 compared to other jurisdictions, or other cities and towns, I should say. So, you know, for miscellaneous, you're, you know, actually on that demographic, you're kind of in the bottom quarter there, right? Your, the city contribution is about 23% of payroll, but you're a little below the 25th percentile, which is about 25% of payroll. Safety is almost right in the middle there, 53.4% of payroll for contribution projected in '24-'25. That's kind of right in the middle. Those numbers are based on the CalPERS reports. We have a footnote there kind of showing, you know, we came up with slightly different projections based on the factors I had mentioned, the risk mitigation being pulled in, the investment losses over the next 10 years, Pepper, a number of different parameters that were built into our model. But you see, we're slightly different, but not extremely different from what CalPERS at this point had projected in their reports. Okay, so, total unfunded liability. We have this here by the various groups. This is one slide. It's not in thousands of dollars. What you see there is total unfunded liability. Well, let's start with the last column. Total actuarial accrued liability, about $38.6 million. Market value of assets, about $27.1. So unfunded liability of $11.5 million, and total about 70% funded. You know, the fact is, is that sure, it would be better to be higher funded. This is not that different from other agencies in the state. And, you know, a funding level, actuarial accrued liability is a target asset value. You're never going to exactly hit that, right? So there's 70% funded at this point. I think the bad news in this slide is kind of hidden. It's that this is based on what CalPERS reported in the June 30, '16 valuations, which used a 7.375% discount rate, right? They've just issued, just last week, one using a 7.25% discount rate. They could go down to 7 with the risk mitigation. We think probably a better measure would be a 6.5% discount rate. That bumps the $11.5 million all the way up to 15.7. This slide has, now, we just kind of combine the previous for miscellaneous, police, and fire, altogether, one slide for the contribution projections. So you can see in total where the costs are expected to go. About $1.3 million this year. You kind of then have those few bumps in the road, or a few level to declines because of the side fund balances. But you're projected to increase to almost $2.3 million by the end of the projection period in '28-'29. So I think, and we have, in the fuller packet, we have more information on kind of investment sensitivity. I think that the takeaway from that is that it'd be extremely unlikely that you would see, you know, investment returns in the future be good enough to really level this out, right? And so I think the takeaway is, we think very likely, it's a matter of time before you end up giving more money to CalPERS. Because investment returns are probably just not going to be sufficient to, they may improve this somewhat, right? They may improve it significantly, but it's not going to keep, get you to kind of a level contribution at where, at the level you're at now of about $1.3 million. So if you go to the next slide, given all that, you know, what kind of options are agencies looking at? You know, the first one listed there is, you know, continue to pay the amounts that CalPERS is asking for, right? Which kind of puts you on that ramp-up schedule and effectively is kind of deferring some costs down the road. We list the second one there just to kind of, we kind of give the kitchen sink to agencies. It might be an expression for that. We actually have had some agencies that actually interested in pension obligation bonds recently. Neither of them, a couple of them got pretty close, but didn't actually issue them. You know, the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, has a paper basically advising agencies not to issue them. The idea behind a pension obligation bond is that if you can borrow it, you know, 3%, 4%, 5%, invest the money with CalPERS, and earn 6%, 7%, 8%, you come out, oops, excuse me, you come out ahead on that deal, right? And reduce your long-term costs. One of the problems with that, though, is it is not guaranteed, right? You might have your debt service set, but there's no guarantee you're going to outperform, you're going to, you know, earn more on the investments with CalPERS than you're paying a debt service. There's no guarantee with that. And the fact of the matter is also is that there's a bigger chance in the short term that you'll come out behind on that than the long term, is kind of another issue. I don't think that one's kind of brought up in the GFOA paper, but nonetheless, they have advised agencies kind of not to look at this, but we mentioned it because it seems to be having some interest with agencies. Option three is, you know, continue to pay what CalPERS is suggesting, or not suggesting, what CalPERS is requiring you to pay, and then in the future, make additional payments as you go forward. Kind of discretionary payments, depending on, you know, how the budgets turn out, and if there are surpluses, maybe carve out a little of that and send it off to CalPERS. If you do that, it's kind of a technical issue, but, and, you know, your finance folks are aware of this, but you do that, then you have options in terms of how CalPERS credits that extra payment in the future, and you just want to make sure you coordinate that with CalPERS. You know, and that's really accelerating the contributions, accelerating the payment scheduling. Option four is kind of the same thing. It's, CalPERS has multiple kind of bases that they're amortizing your unfunded liability over. You can go to CalPERS and say, you know, right now, you're paying your unfunded liability off really over about a 30-year period. You could go to CalPERS and say, well, let's shorten that up. That will ultimately reduce the amount of interest you pay, reduce the amount of contributions you send to CalPERS. And so you could go to CalPERS and fresh start, saying, take our unfunded, amortize it over a 20-year period or 15-year period. There are a few kind of drawbacks to that, one of which is that once you do that, there's kind of no turning back, right? You can, you might fresh start today, but that would be fine, but two years from now, if you decide you didn't really want to go that low, you wanted a longer schedule, you can't kind of go back to CalPERS and increase that in the future. Option five is, you know, just to take funds and sort of set them inside internally with maybe an internal service fund, you know, the, that gives you more flexibility, certainly, than giving the money to CalPERS. The drawback with that is, is that, you know, you're probably going to earn a lot less on that than you would with CalPERS. Now, you could, you know, you could, that statement, I think, in general is true, and in the long term is true. On the other hand, you know, if I was making that statement back in 2008, that wouldn't have been very good advice, right? You never really know what's going to happen year to year, but long-term, you're probably going to earn more, a higher return with CalPERS. Finally, the last option there, which is kind of getting to be fairly popular, there've been over 130 of these set up across the state, is a, what's termed there, irrevocable pension trust. So this is a trust that you would set money aside. It can only be used for payments to CalPERS. Really, it's a, it's a fund, it's a trust for pensions, so the money in it can only be used to reimburse the city for payments to CalPERS or sent directly to CalPERS, okay? It's most commonly used to try to level out your contributions. If you, if you look at, kind of, if we think back to those projections we have with contributions ramping up over time, one of the drawbacks with giving extra money to CalPERS, and I don't think I covered this, is that you're facing a ramp-up. You give them extra money, all you really do is drop that line down parallel. So you're not, if you give extra money to CalPERS, you're not leveling out your contributions. You're just shifting the whole thing down. You're facing another uphill climb. It's just not going to be quite as high in the end, but it's going to be just as steep, okay? And so the 115 trusts have been used a lot to try to set more money aside now, and then draw it out later to try to level out the contributions that you ultimately end up paying for pensions. It does not count as an asset for accounting purposes under GASB 68, so from a financial statement perspective, it doesn't go to reduce the unfunded liability, but, you know, it is, whereas irrevocable trust can only be used for the pension, so that is really the sole purpose of it, regardless of how the accountants may look at it.
When it says Section 115, that's coming out of what code? Is that the IRS code?
The IRS code, yes. So those are, you know, kind of the most common things agencies are looking at. And, you know, unfortunately, there's no magic answer here, right? There is no, I've got a plan for you, and here's what you do, and, you know, you're going to avoid a ton of pain. The fact is, is that the more you put in now, the less you're going to pay later, the more you put in now, the less that you're going to pay long-term in, you know, interest on the contribution. So if, maybe I could open that up to questions, or perhaps April, you?
I was just going to, thank you for the presentation, Doug. We appreciate all the work you've done on this. What we are seeking tonight is to answer any city council questions regarding the unfunded liabilities, what they are, how they're handled. It is, they definitely change every year, so every time there's new valuations put in, it is going to shift there. And we also want to receive your feedback on potential options to managing the unfunded liabilities. If you're in the direction of staying with option one, just continue, maybe setting up a trust, maybe looking at doing a shorter amortization schedule. Mandy, who is our, she's in the back as well, she is our PERS expert, and she did create inside your council packet, there is a spreadsheet that gives you kind of an idea what it would look like if we decided to do a shorter amortization period, how much money the city could potentially save in interest over the long term. But as Doug did present, there is a chance that once you do that fresh start program, there is no turning back. And then also, there is, and you can probably give the correct terminology on it, but for any new losses that take place that we have to cover as part of the unfunded liabilities, that is not wrapped in, and that's automatically given to us in a shorter period. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And I do want, I did want to let council know, one of the slides that Doug referred to, and I can't remember which one it was, where he talked about good news and bad news, that every city is going through this, for the percentage scale, where we're on the 23rd percentile, lower number means good. So that is good for the city. So I wanted to let everybody know, that 23rd percentile, we're doing a lot better than some of the other cities and towns. So I wanted to kind of make that distinction. Also, on our long-range financial forecast, Mark and I did discuss this the other day, and I'm going to be updating the long-range financial forecast to incorporate the new numbers that we do have from Bartell and Associates. Again, very good news on this. When we did the long-range financial forecast, we took the average percentage that we had been paying, that the PERS had increased over a three-year period, which was 11%, and we applied that straight across the board in the long-range financial forecast. When I did the comparison on what we put in the long-range financial forecast, what Bartell has provided to us, for this year, we're spot-on because we knew what the dollar amount was. For the next two years, slightly higher than what we're expecting to pay, by about $15,000, $13,000, so really insignificant. From years 22, fiscal year '22 through '29, their, Bartell's and PERS's estimates on it are a lot lower than 11%, dipping down to 3%, 5%, 7%. So over the long haul for the long-range financial forecast, cumulative difference is about $3 million back in the city's pockets that we're expecting to potentially pay out. So we will be updating those numbers for the city council, but that is good news, that our projections were much higher than what Bartell and PERS had, so we wanted to at least make council aware of that.
Let me just ask a question about that. I may not have absorbed everything you just said, but were our projections higher because we used a higher discount rate than PERS?
No, our projections were higher because I took the amount that PERS, that we had to pay in the unfunded liabilities, a percentage difference from year to year, and I took the average over the three-year period that we've been having to pay for the unfunded liabilities. So our average I put in is 11%.
I see.
When we took Bartell's numbers and looked to see what the percentage change was from year to year, overall, it was much lower than the 11%.
11% of what?
11% increase year over year of how much our unfunded liability is.
Oh, I see. Okay, now I see what you did. All right.
And in the packet, where we talk about what it would look like if we amortized for a shorter period, the 20-year versus 15-year, you'll see that the interest paid, if we shorten it to a 20-year amortization, it is estimated about $1.5 million in interest savings. If you look at, shortening it to a 15, yeah, 15-year amortization, it's a savings of approximately $5.2 million. So it is pretty...
And what's the incremental difference each year? $200,000?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And the increment, so the far right-hand column is incremental difference year over year. So you'll see, if you look at the chart, when you do the 20-year amortization, so for year fiscal year '19, you're looking at, we're going to have a savings of $43,000. Fiscal year '20, we'll have a savings of $108,000. The next year, $69,000. And then you look at the same numbers for the 15-year amortization. So you can see where the increase, it is quite significant, from $260,000 a year up to $300,000, $400,000 a year. So it is quite substantial when you look at the incremental payments.
And just to add to that, just to give you some order of magnitude on what it would take for us to move from a 30-year amortization to a 15-year amortization, save $5 million over that period of time?
It averages a little over $200,000 a year. So it's something that the city, with its current financial condition, could consider, whether it was putting the handcuffs on and locking into a 15-year amortization, or retaining the flexibility and paying as you go, whether it's through the special account that you can set up, or just simply paying CalPERS. So it's some, it's an option that when you consider the 15, I'm sorry, the 15-year amortization starts to produce some real dollar savings to the city in the avoidance of interest payments.
Can I just ask a couple of other technical questions? When you talk about establishing an internal service fund, does such a fund remain subject to general fund liabilities, generally speaking? In other words, is it something that a city, if it loses its, if it loses its will, can pull the money back?
I think so, yes.
So I don't see that as a very good approach for that reason. And then with respect to the IRS Section 115 pension trust, is there, is there, how do I say this? Is there some, are there companies or insurance companies that specialize in operating a single trust that, for lots of cities, so that the costs of administering the trust are very small in relationship to the dollars you put in?
Yes, I mean, there's three outfits that have set these up. PARS, PFM, and Keenan are the three that were well...
Okay, you mentioned those.
You could go out to an attorney and set your own up, the costs, right? Yeah, yeah. PARS has the lion's share of these. I mean, they alone, I think, have over 130, and maybe there's a handful between the other two. two, so they're pretty dominant right now in this market. And so they have an IRS determination letter, they have a bunch of kind of the paperwork done, and they have the, some standard funds that you can select from to determine what you want your investment portfolio to be.
Other council questions? I'm not sure we're going to make a decision tonight, and this is very complicated, and really requires mulling over. I might say that, that I think for 20 years at our law firm, I ran a defined benefit plan, so I've seen many of these issues in the past, but when we had accrued a liability, we certainly sought to pay it off within four or five years.
I have a few questions. Just on a, you know, high level, I'm trying to make sure I understand the difference in some of these options. If you get into Option 3, are you on a set payment schedule? It's not totally discretionary, right? Is it that you decide you make annual payments, and then every year you must make one?
No, it's, would be each year discretionary.
So what, if you were doing this pension trust, you're, it's sort of at your discretion that you're putting money in there?
That would be the same approach, yes.
So, as between the two, is one preferable to the other for any reason?
Well, so, there, there's kind of the two main, a couple, let me, so, additional money, the additional discretionary contribution to Calpers, right? From, from a financial statement impact, that will go to reduce your unfunded liability. Okay, I'm not an accountant, I probably shouldn't say this, but I, you know, I don't know how important that is, right? The financial statements, the fact is, you've set the money aside, right? But it will reduce your unfunded liability, it will be invested with Calpers, so not only do you, you're going to be subject to kind of their volatility going forward on the investment returns, right? You might do well, you might not. And if you give the money, in, you know, Option 3, the draw, the other issue is that, you know, you, you're, you're still facing that ramp up of your contributions over time, right? You're just kind of shifted it down again, so, you know, if you're going from, you know, half a million to a million over, over 10 years, and you get a little bit of money, you drop that down by, you know, to $450,000, you're now going from, say, $450,000 to $950,000, right? You're faced kind of with that same ramp up all over again, in terms of what's required. So those are, that's the way it would work with Option 3. With Option 6, you're probably not going to earn as much money on the return. PARS may, you know, you, if you were looking into this, you certainly talked to them, they may not agree with this statement, but we think long-term, you're probably going to get a better return with Calpers. I mean, they, the $300 billion or whatever they have, you look at the last 30 years, what they've done, and probably long-term, you're better off with the money with Calpers. We're not, also not investment advisors, to give you that caveat, but long-term, that's probably, that would probably say, go with the, with the Option 3. What, what say, and Option 3 also would be, if you're looking at this from an accounting perspective, that would point to Option 3, too, right? So you have a better return with Option 3, it's going to have a financial statement impact, both of those kind of, those issues would say, go with Option 3. Option 6, I think the reason to go with that is the ability to manage your contributions going forward, right? The Option 3, you give to Calpers, you're on their roller coaster, you're on their ramp up. You do Option 6, you put the money in, and you decide when and, and how much you use towards your Calpers contribution in the future, rather than have Calpers determine that. And you also control the investments on Option 6, I don't think I mentioned that before, but with the 115 trust, you, you determine how the money is invested as opposed to Calpers. So you can be less, less aggressive or more conservative with the investments than Calpers is.
So the, you know, so looking at Option 2, it's recommended, it's sort of risky, not, kind of not recommended. Option 4 has less flexibility, it locks you into something. Option 5, other councils could change what was set aside. So then, looking at maybe best options would be Option 3 or 6, and then weighing between the two, the volatility of Option 3, with Option 6, you have, you have the option of how, of the, your risk.
Right.
Okay. And, and then, and that would include continuing on with Option 1. I mean, you could, we could continue with the existing payment plan, but then add Option 6 as sort of a supplemental.
Right. You could get, first give it to supplemental trust, and then decide when it gets, goes, goes over to Calpers. One thing I should mention, you know, in terms of, you know, Option 6, we always described that as an irrevocable trust, and the way I described it is, you can only use it for Calper, to, you know, to reimburse the city for Calpers contribution, send the money to Calpers, right? And, you know, a year or two ago, when this came, came up, I, I would tell agencies that, and a number of them would point out, "Well, wait a minute, if we put $500,000 into the 115 trust," right? And you're five years down the road, there's another council here, and you have a, a $500,000 payment you need to make to Calpers, and you want that money out of the trust, you can't pull it out of the trust, but you could say, "All right, we're not going to send any money to Calpers, we're going to take all of the $500,000 out of the trust, give it to Calpers, and in effect, we have $500,000 more than we would have had." Right? So it is an irrevocable trust, but because of that kind of roundabout way you can get to the money, you, you know, you may or may not want to think of it that way. It's not really, you know, safeguarded against future councils, I suppose you could say.
There's some safeguard to it, as opposed to 5. I'm just, I'm looking between Option 3 and 6, and so, I mean, just, just to try to, try to comparing them, and, so, could you run that, that last scenario again?
Yeah, so, if you put, suppose you put half a million dollars into the 115 trust today, okay? And that money's just sitting there, and five years from now, a future council decides, "Oh, you know, we want that money out, we thought that was a mistake, let's get the money out." Well, the trust would say, "No, you can't, we can't, you can't take the money out," right? But in that year, you're probably going to have at least a $500,000 contribution that's needed to be paid to Calpers, right? And so, instead of paying that contribution to Calpers, you just say, "No, we're not going to send any money to Calpers, we're going to take the trust and send it over to Calpers," and your $500,000, you effectively pulled it out.
Gotcha, okay.
What a good way of thinking about that, and, and thinking about a responsible public agency would be, it's a strategy of managing through recessions, if we found ourselves in a bit of a downturn, and we're looking for short-term opportunities to reduce the burden on the general fund. That might be a mechanism that some agencies would use. I tend to like the Option 3, and believe that the city's emerging, you know, financial position would allow for a fairly aggressive effort to sustain that, and the city would have the, the flexibility to pull back and adjust if necessary during downturns. And so, it's an option that allows the council to have and retain flexibility moving forward.
Is that why, we haven't talked much about Option 4. Is it because we don't, wouldn't have the flexibility, we'd be on the set payment schedule, and it might be too much for us to have bitten off?
I think the, the concern would be a substantial loss by PERS that gets rolled into the rates in a fairly short period of time. The, the nice thing about it, and frankly, I'm attracted to that 15-year term, too, because I, I see an opportunity for this city to save $5 million, which we, 35% of the current general fund budget, in a fairly short amount of time, and it's sort of like prepaying a car payment, the, the sooner we pay this down, the sooner we save money. And so, with the current financial position, and knowing that the obligation to get on a 15-year term is only about $200,000 a year extra, in a $14 million budget, we can afford that. And it, it will save a lot of money long-term if we start that, and I think by establishing a precedent, you know, when we get to a point of talking about next year's budget, this seems well within our reach to start to look at a 15-year term, and attempt to commit to that long-term.
So even if there's a downturn, predicted downturn, that's not such a big nut to crack that we couldn't?
Right, so, an example would be if it costs us $200,000 to put ourselves on a 15-year term, and the revenue started sliding because of a recession, we had, we would have the ability to identify $200,000 of, of money that could be used to sustain operations during that period of, during that particular fiscal year, that we were experiencing a downturn. Or, we could find those savings somewhere else, and continue to maintain that 15-year clip.
Well, I'm very interested in seeing what the long-term financial forecast as revised shows, because it's obviously imperative that we maintain our reserve position. One, one, one thought that occurs to me from time to time is that our payment on our mortgage that, that we took out to acquire the Am Street property does expire in 2020, and that's about $180,000 a year. Don't hold me to these numbers precisely, but I think I'm close. And that, in and of itself, would provide the funds, basically, to go to a 15-year or possibly a 20-year amortization schedule. I, just instinctively, looking at these various options, I would be very reluctant to Option 5, Option 6, and completely, totally oppose to Option 2, which strikes me as just a speculative arbitrage situation that could turn out very badly. But I also do believe that we need to do more than continue with the existing plan projection, because of the, what I, what, what I perceive as the very excellent report, which shows that the discount rate is going to go down over time, and that's been so much discussed in the Wall Street Journal and elsewhere, that it just seems prudent to plan on that basis. Are there any other council comment?
I think Paul was about to say something.
Well, I don't know if I have anything magic to add to it. I, I think I'm an Option 3 person. I think that it, it adds a commitment that we need to obviously contribute more than we've been contributing, but I also like the flexibility that's necessary from budget year to budget year. You know, budgets are a matter of prioritizing, we're, we're doing this, and just focusing on this one payment, which is an important payment, obviously, but it's out of the context of an entire budget. And you have to start thinking, "Well, maybe I want to put that $500,000 into Streets and Roads, because that's important for our community, too." So they're equally important, and that's how I look at a budget. We're just looking at this, but we're not looking at the context of all the other things that we have with the city. So I think Option 3 allows us to make that hard decision every year, and a commitment, without being locked into the fresh start. I mean, I just think that's a little too, too, too much to handle. I like the concept of it, but I also like the flexibility.
And you could, you could morph the two, right? And you could do Option 3.
That's right.
Budget on a 15-year or 20-year.
Sure.
Not go to Calpers and say, "We're locked into that," right?
Right, right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I like the, I like the, the very substantial interest savings to the city over the period of time. I mean, this is a very significant liability, both in the short-term and the long-term, and we need to close the gap, there's just no question about it. Any further council discussion?
Yeah, I, I just have one more thing to say. We are in, obviously, better financial shape than we've been. We're still resisting sort of the idea to sell some assets, which could make a big difference in our bottom line. And I think as we go forward through shape, and try to figure out how we're going to pay for some of these buildings, and what we're going to do, I think it's incumbent on us to look at other money that we're sitting on, and we're not getting anything for it. And it could go a long way to not having to look every year for $150,000 or $200,000, and so, I just hope we get to that discussion at some point.
One question I have is whether the timing, first of all, I don't know how we make our payments, how often we make them, but does the timing, seems like the timing would affect the ability to gain with respect to interest savings. I don't know, wouldn't we do that? Do we do it one time a year? Do we do it every quarter? To me, it would make us, I mean, that's how I operate my business, I, everything's about timing, so.
You get a...
We currently make the unfunded liability payments at the very beginning of the year. So we make one lump-sum payment at the beginning of the year from the, for the budgeted amount. And the reason we do that is because if we do payments over time, we can pay monthly on it, but then we do have to pay interest on it, and so we do save money by making one lump-sum payment. So the good news is, we have made the payment for fiscal year '18 already, so it is done, processed with Calpers, so we've already made our payment.
All right, any, I don't know that we have any further light to shed on, at this point, but I think you've got some sense of where our thinking is.
Very helpful, thank you.
All right. Then that takes us to the final...
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Just, thank you for breaking that down for us, it was, it helped.
Thank you, helpful, it was too painful.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to the argument in favor of Measure E. I think it hopefully speaks for itself at this point. Is there any further council discussion with respect to it? This comes about as, as Councilmember Doring and myself fiddled around a little bit with what was previously before the council, but we thought we'd fiddled with it just enough that we needed to bring it back, rather than just send it off. Is that accurate?
We did, we did a fair amount of fiddling.
So, so what, is there anything significant that was different than?
I don't think so, and I think this is very, very close to what we can expect to see on the ballot measures from the county and the other cities. When, when this was previously before us, we had not received the input from the county consultant, which came in, as I recall, maybe a couple of days later, and there were a couple of thoughts, particularly relating to traffic, that we thought were worthwhile to work into our, into our Measure E. And I believe, at this point, that if all the Measure E ballot arguments are put side by side, any real critic would find ours about the best.
Move to approve.
Could you elaborate on what the phrase "and related programs" means in, in the second paragraph? It's going to support affordable and workforce housing and related programs.
The county language suggested "and related programs," and, for example, that might include subsidy programs that help folks that live in affordable housing to get to work, who knows? But it, it would definitely be related to affordable housing projects.
Okay, that, that's the only language that strikes me as a little bit of a head-scratcher if you're a resident looking at the ballot language, like, what are you going to use the money for? So, but...
This is the language that was recommended by the county.
Does, is there any input on what the county was thinking about that?
Yeah, they did have a couple of examples, it's just that I'm not recalling them at the moment.
The ordinance that's adopted, subject to voter approval, has a similar reference, and it, it may be helpful to add the word "housing" before that word, just to add a little clarification, but in many respects, some of those programs that are referenced are maybe undefined at this point, because they may be developed by the use of these resources over time. And so, I think in some respects, we don't know what those programs will be, but they will be housing-related, and, and, and used in a way to help support housing for, for workforce-type housing projects within the county and the city.
I certainly have no problem with that, add the word "housing," if that helps you. Housing-related programs.
No, I don't, I'm just saying, the normal person looking at this might say, "What does that mean? Where's the money going?"
Why don't we agree to add the word "housing-related programs," provided it doesn't mess up our word count?
Yeah, well, we're well under.
Okay.
All right.
The only question I had, this may be a Tom question, is, you know, in the second to last paragraph, there's, the parentheses there, it's added, "for which we urge channeling a residence to support in their capacity as county residents." We're, we're really referring to another measure, and I'm not sure if that is legal. I, I have, I wouldn't want us to get into any legal difficulty there with a representative. get into any legal difficulty there, with a reference to that.
Yeah, I did look at that, actually, I thought of that, and, obviously, there's no case law directly on point there, but it's my view that this is appropriate and legal, would withstand what is a fairly deferential standard of review for these, any challenge that would be brought.
All right. Any further discussions? There are motion to approve Measure E with the addition of the word "housing" before "related programs"?
Still moved.
Second? I'll second it. Roll call.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilman Galbraith?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilor Doring?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Koberstein?
Yes.
All right, I think that brings us to the end. Thank you very much, everybody, appreciate.